All right, I'm going to call to order the April fourteenth Common Council meeting at seven thirty-five. First up is Pledge of Allegiance, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for my nation under God, in his law, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call, please.
Alder Aratafrata.
Here.
Alder Barr.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Clouter.
Here.
Alder Krause.
Here.
Alder Rice, we know she's being delayed. Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schrader.
Here.
Alder Scott.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, Mayor.
All right, thank you, thanks everyone for your patience as we try and use some technology here. It sounds, seems like everyone is not on too bad of a delay, so hopefully that continues, we don't get any feedback issues. It's, uh, we'll get through it, I'll just try and be patient and I'll try and, you know, get everyone in for discussion and stuff like that, so. For next up is public appearances for non-agenda items, I do not have anything that is not on the agenda, so I'm gonna just keep moving along to consent agendas, there, uh, a motion for that?
So I'm opposed to approve.
Second.
All right, seconded by Tom, is there anything anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda at all? Seeing none, then all in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
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 And any opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved, administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I just did want to report that, um, since, since the Alders haven't been, um, able to come in or, or chat as they normally do in, in City Hall, that, um, the workflow is going very well, given our situation here. You know, we'll give reports later, there's a lot of, uh, construction activity in the city. Our Public Works crews, our inspectors, our public safety gentlemen and ladies are, are on the street. People are working, um, in City Hall via, either via remote, through their home or, uh, through their office here. So, in a way, it's, it's business as unusual here. We're getting things done, we're staying on track and, um, I really want to, um, take this opportunity to, to thank staff, for all they've done during this time, it's a difficult time, and everyone's really stepped up, uh, and gone the extra mile here, so. Thanks to the Alders, thanks to the mayor, uh, for working with us through this process and, um, we'll keep plugging away and hopefully this, uh, we're on the downslope here.
Any questions for Pat? All right, seeing none, we'll go into Plan Commission, Tom, do you wanna make a motion?
The Plan Commission, um, ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero dash seventeen. Plan Commission Resolution P C R zero two dash nineteen. An ordinance to adopt the twenty nineteen amendment to the comprehensive plan amendment figure four-ten. Future land use plan map for property associated with, it was twenty-five forty-six and twenty-five fifty-six South Fish hatchery road, City of Pittsburgh, Dane County, Wisconsin. This is from the Plan Commission Resolution, um, adopting and recommending the twenty nineteen amendment to the comp plan. Uh, figure four-ten, future land use map plan for property associated with the same twenty-five forty-six and twenty-five fifty-six South Fish hatchery road, City of Pittsburgh and Dane County, Wisconsin. This was the one that was tabled from September tenth to the meeting uncertain, um, as of November twenty-fourth, but obviously today, uh, moved the, moved from Plan Commission.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan, and so, I think people kinda know where they sit on this, but, um, I did want to just kinda recap, this is, obviously bounced back and forth a little bit and postponed. So what is currently on the table from Plan Commission is for this property to be, uh, either low-density residential or industrial-commercial. I know that we had previously sent it back to them as low-density residential only. I do have a number of people who have sent in comments to read through, but is there anything else that you would like to talk about, Pat, before I read those comments?
Not at this point in time, I believe we were supposed to have an appearance from, uh, one of the property owners, but I don't see him here.
Okay.
I guess if he comes during the readings, you can, uh, let him in.
Great. All right, then, why don't I read through these comments that we have? First up, uh, hello Mayor Richardson, I'm writing to you to express my support for ordinance twenty nineteen dash oh dash seventeen, submitted by former Alder Dan Carpenter. The four parcels associated with twenty-five forty-six and twenty-five fifty-six South Fish Hatchery Road should return to its former land use designation of low-density residential. Thank you, Jim Wheeler from Pittsburgh. My name is Gary Pedoni, I reside at two-five-two-three Ryland Street and have lived in Pittsburgh for twenty-three years. Regarding twenty-four fifty-six and twenty-five fifty-six South Fish Hatchery Road, I'm asking the council to make the final decision and remove the industrial commercial use component as recommended by the Plan Commission and approve as submitted in May twenty-nineteen by former Alder Carpenter, said only low-density residential is allowed. This returns it to low-density residential as it was in the two thousand nine comprehensive plan. It has been stated at previous council meetings numerous times how dangerous it would be to have a number of vehicles entering and exiting these properties. Low-density residential solves these issues and is the only designation that makes sense. Any promises to correct these issues in the future is not acceptable, thank you very much. Dear Mayor's and Mayor and Alders, on behalf of Randy Coath, I respectfully request that the council table the proposed ordinance amendment referenced above. The proposal is bad policy and procedure, its adoption tonight would be unfortunate practice. The ordinance is added with what comprehensive planning is supposed to be. Plans are a long-time vision for a community, this ordinance is reaction. Instead of being driven by the community's long-term needs, the ordinance is driven by parochial political pressure. Plan involved can and should be developed for the benefit of the city. Access issues may need to be addressed, but not by denying the community the housing that development could create. Pittsburgh is about to transition to a new common council, new council should be allowed to resolve this issue. You've been tossing this year on for months without conclusion, the voters have chosen new leadership for the city. If you act on this issue tonight, you will close this session of the council on a bitter note. It is no better for the common council to take lame duck action on an issue of this kind than it was for our legislature to meet after November twenty-eighteen election to the hands of its successors. Please respect the role of your successors and table this ordinance. Sincerely, Mark Hazel Baker from Casita Law Legal Group. Dear Mayor Richardson, I am unable to attend the four-fourteen-twenty council meeting this evening, but I do register in opposition to ordinance twenty nineteen zero seventeen, as recommended by the Plan Commission on twenty fifteen nineteen. I respectfully urge the council to modify the wording of ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero dash nineteen, so that, one, industrial commercial uses are deleted from the list of allowable uses on the four tax parcels at twenty-four fifty-six and twenty-five fifty-six South Fish Hatchery Road, and two, only low-density residential housing is allowed on these four parcels. These modifications will further your efforts to conduct, conduct the City of Pittsburgh business with transparency to the public and concern from safety. Sincerely, Colleen Chase from Pittsburgh. Hello Mayor Richardson, and this is from Jay Hockmuth in Pittsburgh as well. Thank you and your common council colleagues for your service to Pittsburgh during these challenging times. My name is Jay Hockmuth, a Pittsburgh residence, resident for thirty-three years. Due to COVID-nineteen pandemic, I will not be able to attend the four-fourteen-twenty council meeting, however, I'd like to register in opposition to ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero dash seventeen, as recommended by the Plan Commission as ten fifteen nineteen. I respectfully urge the council to modify the wording of ordinance twenty nineteen oh nineteen, so that, one, industrial commercial uses are deleted from the list of allowable uses on the four tax parcels at twenty-four fifty-six and twenty-five fifty-six South Fish Hatchery Road, and two, only low-density residential housing is allowed on these four parcels. Doing that will, one, restore the designated use that existed when the comp plan was adopted in two thousand nine, was amended in twenty-fourteen and twenty-seventeen via a process that did not comply with public notification requirements and state law, and two, eliminate the longstanding widespread public concern about traffic safety issues created by industrial commercial use of these four parcels. After low-density is reinstated, if a good project is proposed for these parcels that does not create traffic safety issues on South Fish Hatchery Road or Nobel Drive, the comp plan can be amended if a different use designation is needed so the project can proceed. This is how the controversy about the development of a six-acre parcel in North Stoner Prairie neighborhood was resolved last year. Thank you for assuring these comments are part of the official record for Agenda Item seven dash eight dash one, sincerely, Jay Hockmuth. One second, wanna take a drink? All right. Uh, I want, uh, this is from Cheryl Strassman from Pittsburgh. I want to share some of my thoughts on the zoning for the four tax parcels at twenty-five forty-six and twenty-five fifty-six South Fish Hatchery Road. I hope that the low-density designation, designation without the commercial industrial attached will have your support at the common council meeting on April fourteenth, twenty-twenty. This entire process has been a mess from the beginning. Had I known that there was even a possibility that the city would approve high-density with industrial commercial on those four parcels that have been residential, we would not have torn down our house and built a new one or made other improvements to our property, which we have owned and resided at since nineteen seventy-eight. Our property at two-five-three-four South Fish Hatchery Road also has commercial property behind our house, which is not visible from the road. These properties have always been residential, with one of the properties having commercial behind the house. Randy Coath's property at twenty-five fifty-six South Fish Hatchery Road. Randy purchased the property at twenty-five fifty-six South Fish Hatchery Road from Bruce Cass. Mr. Cass had a woodworking shop behind his house. After the purchase, the commercial property that was behind his house was in question. Randy came to us and asked for our help so he could keep the commercial zoning for his tree trimming business, we were happy to help him. We appeared at several town board meetings and asked some of our friends in the community if they would appear on Randy's behalf in supporting the commercial designation. It was granted, but with the caveat that the commercial designation would expire in twenty years reverting back to rural residential. Randy was fine with that, as he told the town board, he would not need the commercial designation after twenty years as he would be moving back up north. Mary Josephson's property at two-five-four-six South Fish Hatchery Road was always residential only. When the twenty-fourteen comprehensive plan amendment changed the properties to high-density, Randy had his property for sale. I know this one person who was interested in purchasing the property at two-five-five-six South Fish Hatchery Road as they wanted to build a new house. Randy was asking seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the property. Mary Josephson owned the property and resided at two-five-four-six South Fish Hatchery Road. There's lack of transparency during the comp plan amendment changing from residential to high-density, we never heard a word from Mr. Coath. He knew we would not want that high-density zoning next to our property and we would have voiced our opposition. It was approved without any opposition because no one knew about it, this was a major change. The identity was approved because the Plan Commission Chair and others that walked the property with Mr. Coath told him they envisioned this property for six to ten condos. As soon as it was approved, high-density projects were proposed, but not the condos that were envisioned. It was never their intention for condos, they needed the ten condos to achieve high-density for the projects they had in mind. My citizens have worked very hard, putting countless hours to have their voices heard. Alders Dan Carpenter, Sarah Schrader, Janelle Rice, and Dan Barr listened and sponsored the twenty-nineteen comp plan amendment. The Plan Commission has voted twice to change the twenty-nineteen comp plan amendment that was originally submitted to include industrial-commercial. Please do not accept that recommendation, please vote tonight to reinstate low-density housing for these four parcels. Uh, this is from Rita Burks from Pittsburgh. I am Rita Burks Hendricks, uh, Pittsburgh resident for fifteen years. Thank you to Mayor Richardson, Alders, and city staff for keeping the city going during these trying times, we appreciate all you do. Tonight, we ask you to finish several years of uncertainty and to correct some errors when you turn this property back to where it was in the two thousand nine comprehensive plan. We are a group of people who have come together to help each other because we had a need to be heard. Some of us are raising young families, others are retired and have more time to attend meetings. Some live in homes, others in condos, and others in apartments. We now all have the same political beliefs, religions, or backgrounds, but we came together because we discovered a need. A need to be safe and for others to be safe in this area of Fish Hatchery Road. A need to believe in transparent government in Pittsburgh, a need to help Pittsburgh grow responsibly, and a need to listen to the needs of other neighborhoods and support each other. In two thousand nine, these properties were residential, two houses on large lots. This is what was there when people bought their houses or condos, made improvements to their properties, et cetera. In twenty-fourteen, there was a change to high-density. Carol Poole told us that it was changed because the Plan Commission and others walked the land and said it was an ideal spot for six to ten condos. Area residents weren't properly notified, as is evident watching videos of the meetings. It was changed in a way that neighbors and even the Plan Commission had not expected. In twenty-seventeen, industrial commercials added. Again, there wasn't proper notice or citizens would have been there, notices weren't received, no proper addresses on agendas, et cetera. Since then, various proposals have come forward that would have magnified already horrendous traffic conditions and didn't meet the Pittsburgh housing plan for access to services. The developers claimed that their traffic studies showed there were no issues and that citizens didn't know what they were talking about. Citizens haven't counted, they have been called names and told they don't, didn't matter. We should expect, and some of us who have nearly been killed in the stretch of Fish Hatchery Road would expect better. The Plan Commission's ten fifteen nineteen recommendation needs to be changed to delete the industrial commercial use for these four parcels in order to restore the designated use that existed when the comp plan was adopted in two thousand nine. Since comprehensive plan allows for comprehensive plan amendments twice a year, there will be time for a developer to bring new plans forward that necessitate a change, but it will also give citizens an opportunity to weigh in, since those denied in twenty-fourteen and twenty-seventeen. Thank you for hearing us once again. We, the undersigned Pittsburgh residents, want to register in opposition to ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero dash nineteen, as it was rewritten by the Plan Commission in October twenty-nineteen. I want the amendment approved as it was written in May of twenty-nineteen and sponsored by Alder Schrader, Barr, and Rice. At this time, these properties should be low-density residential only and industrial commercial should not be allowed. Limited to low-density residential on these four parcels will help restore trust in Pittsburgh government, recognize that there are different traffic conditions, also citizen input which was denied in twenty-fourteen and twenty-seventeen. Dale Hendricks, Heidi Knapp, Elias Crush, Amira Crush, Don Strassman, Josie Pedoni, Gary Pedoni, and Sean Mock. Uh, Mayor, dear, to Mayor Richardson, Council, after attending many council and planning meetings during the past few years on this very same issue, with numerous testimonies for residents, we urge you to finally make the decision to re-turn these parcels back to the original low-density proposal. Preventing traffic accidents and tragedies at this location, especially due to the hill blocking driver's view, and keeping all city residents safe should be the top priority. Please finalize vote today to return these parcels to low-density as originally designated in two thousand nine comprehensive plan amendment. Thank you, Josie Pedoni from Pittsburgh. Dear Mayor Richardson and common council members, I will not be able to attend the four-fourteen-twenty common council meeting tonight due to COVID-nineteen social distancing, but did want you to consider these comments as part of the official record. As you may know, I have been a Pittsburgh resident for over thirty-four years and always a proponent of open transparent government that involves citizen input and the concerns of all affected parties. I follow what this city has done well in the past and also where major mistakes have been made in comprehensive planning amendments and their applications. I've offered constructive comments in the past and doing so again now. To that end, I would like to register in opposition to ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero dash seventeen, as recommended by the Plan Commission on ten fifteen nineteen. I also respectfully urge the council to modify the wording of ordinance twenty nineteen zero nineteen, so that, one, industrial commercial uses are deleted from the list of allowable uses on the four tax parcels at two-five-four, five, two-four-five-six and two-five-five-six South Fish Hatchery Road, and two, only low-density residential housing is allowed on these four parcels. Doing that will, one, restore the designated use that existed when the comp plan was adopted in two thousand nine, was amended in twenty-fourteen and twenty-seventeen via a process that does, that did not comply with public notification requirements and state law, and two, eliminate the longstanding widespread public concern about traffic safety issues created by industrial commercial use of these four parcels. After low-density is reinstated, if a good project is proposed for these parcels that does not create traffic safety issues on South Fish Hatchery Road or Nobel Drive, the comp plan can be amended if a different use designation is needed so the project can proceed. This is how the controversy about the development of a six-acre parcel in the North Stoner Prairie neighborhood resolved last year that I was heavily involved with. Thank you for assuring these comments are part of the official record for Agenda Item seven A-one. Sincerely, Thomas Thorson from Fitchbury. One more. To the Mayor and Common Council, statement for official record of Common Council Agenda, four tax parcels at two-five, two-four-five-six and two-five-five-six South Fish Hatchery Road. We wish to register in opposition to ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero dash seventeen, as recommended by the Plan Commission on ten fifteen nineteen. Please modify the wording in this ordinance so that only low-density residential housing is allowed on these four parcels. This will restore the designated use that existed when the comp plan was adopted in two thousand nine, later amended in a legally unsound manner regarding public notification requirements and state law. Eliminate the serious public concern about traffic safety issues at the Fish Hatchery Road and Nobel Drive intersection created by industrial commercial use of these four parcels. Once low-density is reinstated, the comp plan can be amended if an appropriate, if different use designation is requested. In two thousand nine, the controversial proposed development of a six-acre parcel in North Stoner Prairie development resolved in the manner recommended in this letter. Thank you, John and Sue Easterday from Pittsburgh. That's what I have for written comments I've been sent in, did the individual show up, Pat?
No, he hasn't.
Okay. Is Janelle on the line? Okay, Janelle's on the line now, all right. So, I don't see any other public comment at this point. People, council members that wanna provide comments or feedback, we've talked about this a lot over the years. So, anyone? I don't see anyone that wants to speak at this point, oh Dorothy, all right, Dorothy, all right, I got one taker.
Yeah, I'm kinda tired of this too. This is a difficult one because it is a neighborhood against, um, purposes that others, including the landowner, want to use the land for. They have a proposal on the board that would use it for industrial commercial use along with the adjoining property to the north that would exit onto Nobel Drive. If we do not allow industrial commercial, that would not be able to happen. And this would continue to remain in limbo because I do not believe the property owner is willing to do just single-family low-density housing. The surrounding properties, including the property immediately to the south, is industrial commercial. It may not be zoned industrial commercial, but that is the use that it's under right now. I don't think it's appropriate to surround low-density housing with industrial commercial uses. I don't believe that that's allowed in our smart code zoning and there's a reason for that because it is simply not an appropriate way to design a community. These properties should be allowed to be used in industrial commercial way as are the surrounding commu, the properties around it.
Uh, because this is an amendment to the comp plan, we do need five votes to change it. So, five yes votes to change something. Scott, is there anyone online that wanted to speak, I don't know, oh, Sarah does, all right, Sarah Schrader, go for it.
Thanks, Sarah. I just, I would just say that I live in this area, I've experienced the traffic firsthand. I think everyone's already said that we've had a lot of conversations about this where traffic can, traffic safety is definitely a concern and just even, um, how this zoning came to be is a concern. I would vote to remove the industrial commercial, let's just get this back to low-density residential as it was proposed and kind of move forward.
All right, is there anyone else online? Yeah, Julia.
Yeah, so I, I know that everyone knows my position. I, I wanna vote to keep the industrial commercial because this lot is surrounded by commercial lot. I think the concern of traffic, it was, um, brought in the last, one of the last meeting that we discussed, that, uh, if we have a low density, uh, I don't know, I don't remember how many cars we can, you know, how many houses we can put in these two lots, or four lots, I don't remember. But I think the traffic was also where I issue even with low density. I wanna vote to provide flexibility to this lot for future development, they are surrounded by commercial lot. So, I think it makes sense to keep that language, you know, and then, uh, you know, the council, we have the final authority to determine what type of development is gonna come there. If, if another development with commercial is coming, so we, we can analyze, it makes sense or no. I think the Plan Commission made a big compromise, adding the language that there should be a connection to the, um, there should be, uh, there should be another access to the, to the lot. So that one is a big compromise. So, and I wanna continue with my position that I have done from, since day one, so, um, you know, I wanna support what Plan Commission brought to us.
All right, thank you, Julia, and you reminded me of another thing I wanted to mention is that the Plan Commission also put a restriction on this when they designated industrial commercial or low-density residential, that, uh, no development shall provide access on Fish Hatchery Road, that would have to be provided by either Nobel or Research Park Drive. So I forgot that piece to it as well. All right, I don't see anyone else that wants to speak. So, uh, what is on the table is still, at this point, what the Plan Commission sent us, which is, uh, for it to be, I just wanna make sure, it would be industrial, commercial, or, it is low-density, okay, cuz it's set, it's said wrong on the packet, actually.
Sorry then, can you clarify, I guess I'm a little confused as to what it is, cuz I thought it was just the I, industrial, commercial.
Yeah, I had to.
All right, let me double-check here. I'm just gonna look through the packet here real quick, it's bounced back and forth so many times, it's hard to keep track, and...
The action of the Plan Commission was for the combination of low-density residential and/or industrial commercial.
With the restriction that no access would be on Fish Hatchery Road.
That's correct.
Nobel or Research Park Drive.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Tom?
Sent, we sent, right, thinking right.
Yeah, the council did not send that to Plan Commission, that's what, it's kinda bounced back.
They changed it.
We, as a council, most recently, the last time we sent it by the Plan Commission, said low-density residential only. So, so. Yeah, I guess, seeing nothing else. So, right now, what we would vote on is what the Plan Commission sent back to us, which is low-density residential or industrial commercial, both of them would be on there with the restriction of no access on Fish Hatchery.
You'd have to amend it.
There would need to be an amendment to go back to what we had sent them.
Right.
Is that some, that you wanna speak to that or you wanna vote on? I don't wanna put words in your mouth.
Well, there was already a motion.
Right, I'm just wondering, he, I guess...
There is a motion to amend.
No, there's not a motion to amend, there's a motion to approve, but now we would amend it. We, we're geared to this, so if someone wants to amend it, that's what you would need to do right now. And it seems like someone here wants, oh, Sarah, all right, Sarah, leave your hand.
All right, I guess I wasn't clear, I'd like to make a motion to amend this, to clearly state that it is just designated low-density residential as it was previously.
And would you include the restriction that the access has to be on Nobel and, or Research Park Drive?
I think that was a great insight that the Plan Commission provided.
Okay, is there a second?
I would second that.
All right, seconded by Janelle. And I don't know if we need any further discussion, but I don't wanna...
You would need, uh, the first and second to agree with the amendment?
No, we need to vote on the amendment first. They're proposing...
Oh, it's not a friendly amendment?
No.
Okay.
Nope. Uh, all right, so, we will first vote on the amendment to change it back to low-density residential only with the restriction of no access on Fish Hatchery Road, and I will ask for a roll call for that pass, so this is the first step of changing it to what we urgently sent back and then we'll have to vote again. Can you do a roll call for me, please, Pat?
I will.
Can you, can you explain what a no means and what a yes mean?
Yeah, so a yes would be that you, you would change what we are going to ultimately approve to be low-density residential only. A no vote would say you wanna keep it as low-density residential or industrial commercial, which is what Plan Commission had sent to us.
Okay, we all set? Alder Aratafrata.
No.
Alder Barr.
Aye.
Alder Clouter.
Aye.
Alder Krause.
No.
Alder Rice.
Aye.
Alder Schrader.
Aye.
Alder Scott.
No.
Alder Strassman.
Aye.
It passes five to three.
All right, so the amendment passes, so now, we're back to kind of the main motion, but it's now changed to what we just voted on, which is low-density residential only with the restriction of access has to be not on Fish Hatchery Road through Nobel or Research Park Drive. I don't know if there's any other discussion, but if someone has any further comments, we've talked about this for quite a bit over the last year. All right, seeing none, I'll ask again for a roll call, so now you would vote to approve the, what we just amended it to essentially, which is low-density residential only with the restrictions, um, of where the access is. So, a yes would be, yes, you want that, I'm guessing it's gonna be the same people that just voted on it, but we'll find out.
Alder Strassman.
Aye.
Alder Scott.
No.
Alder Schrader?
Aye.
Alder Rice?
Aye.
Alder Krausey?
No.
Alder Crow- Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Barr?
Aye.
Alder Aratafara?
No.
Uh, it passes five to three.
Alright, thank you. Alright, before we go to the Board of Public Works, I wanna skip to the last two items on the agenda. Uh, they're related, and we have some people here that wanna speak about number four, and so I'd like to do these right now.
We, uh, we don't have Valerie on yet.
Oh, we don't?
No.
Okay.
She won't be on until about eight fifteen.
Alright, so we'll do a couple things, that's ten minutes away, so, ten minutes, we'll...
Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
I gotta drop off for a second and see if I can fix this problem with my camera, be back shortly.
Okay, alright, so, once Valerie gets on, then we'll set up, hopefully ten minutes, Jason. Alright, Board of Public Works, then, Dan, do you wanna make a resolution?
Yep, a motion to approve, uh, resolution for sub- resolution R forty-six twenty approving agreement for subdivision improvements in the plan of Crescent Crossing.
Second.
Second? Uh, is there, uh, did you approve it in Public Works?
I did.
Did Finance approve it? You also did there, alright. And I believe that's, is this Debbie, Mike?
Um, nope, she's Stoner Prairie.
Oh, sorry, that's right.
Yep.
Same, same neighborhood, wrong, on the wrong piece. Alright, uh, do you wanna speak to this, Mike? Just explain it real quick.
Yep, just real briefly, this is a standard subdivision improvement agreement, kinda lays out what, what the expectations are for public improvements. Um, kinda tells them what the, has to be done in order to get building permits and occupancy. Not, not any different than anyone that we've done in the past, so, very standard.
Alright, any questions at all? Seeing none. Oh, Dorothy?
A concern that I expressed whenever it was, was that, and I, I think it was actually in their, uh, the, the doc- the neighborhood document, what is that called again? Anyway, what they were planning was single-car garages with driveways, with single-car driveway and no alley parking in addition. I wanted to find out whether they've loosened up on that or made it more reasonable for people for, because the reality is every adult in a household is gonna own a car.
I believe they have a car stall in the driveway besides the garage itself, but they still do not want any alley parking. So there would be enough for two cars in the rear is I believe what they're planning on.
So any other cars would have to be in front of the houses on the street, which is gonna be?
Correct.
Limited?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna want to keep a close eye and make sure because we end up owning the problem once it's been built, and I wanna make sure that it's not going to be a huge problem. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? I think I see anyone else, so I can go, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Alright, that is approved. Uh, wanna do the next one, Dan?
Sure, um, I'll make a motion, offer, you know what, give me two seconds, I lost my spot, sorry there, Mayor.
You want my paper?
Oh, thank you.
It's the next one from the checked.
Okay, thank you very much, Dorothy. Um, I'll make a motion to approve resolution R fifty-six dash twenty, resolution to approve redevelopment guidance for stormwater management requirements on redevelopment projects. This is only guidance.
Is there a second?
He can second.
Alright, seconded by Dorothy, and did Public Works approve?
They did.
Alright, do you wanna explain this one quick, Mike?
Yep, this is, we've just kinda mirrored what Dane County and the city of Madison did because there's a lot of questions on redevelopment as to what the requirements are, and this just gives developers kind of a guide document going in so that they can hit the ground running and know what, what, what our expectations are. It's guidance only, it follows our ordinance.
Alright, any questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Alright, that is approved. Next one, Dan?
Uh, make a motion to approve resolution R fifty-eight dash twenty, the Seminole Village Pond Municipal Flood Control.
No second there.
Alright, seconded by Dorothy, and did Public Works approve?
They did.
Did Finance approve? Did Finance approve? Yeah, okay, good. Alright, you wanna speak to this one, Mike?
Yep, this is, uh, as part of the McKee Road project, we're expanding the Seminole Village Pond, and we're gonna do some dredging to get increased capacity to give more flooding protection to the neighborhood. And so we're applying for a grant of about a hundred and seventy-four thousand from the DNR, and that's what this is for, but we, just so you guys know, we're also applying for a grant from Dane County for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's about three hundred thousand, and we anticipate the total project cost to be about three hundred and fifty thousand.
Alright, questions, oh, Julia?
Uh, yeah, my question is, I want to know how feasible are we gonna be obtaining this grant? And what happens if we don't obtain those grants? How are we gonna pay for that?
Um, it is budgeted, the whole amount is in the budget already. So this would be just reducing the budget requirement, and we do feel very confident, we've talked to the DNR, and it looks like it scores pretty well, but it is budgeted.
Further, Dorothy?
As part of that whole project, I know they're going to be taking a lot of trees out. Um, the Seminole Village is concerned about screening between Seminole Highway and their properties. If we do get these grants, as a city, can we talk about using some of that budgeted money to find a way to help homeo- homeowners replace some of the trees with more screening between the pond and their properties?
It, it would require an amendment, uh, because right now, the, the money that's budgeted for is for the, out of the stormwater utility. Uh, this would require an amendment, the trees wouldn't qualify in that regard, so it would, we would have to amend some component of the budget to include landscaping or something along those lines.
Okay, if something is possible, I'd like to be able to do something at an appropriate time, probably not now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing nothing else, it looks like. I can go to a vote, all in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Alright, that is approved. Now, before we do the next item, we do have Valerie and Sarah online, so I would like to skip to the last two items on our new business, ten A three and ten A four. They're related, and, uh, we do have some people here that wanna speak on number four of that. So we'll do number three first, and then we'll get to number four, um, but then these gentlemen can move on with their night. So, uh, first up is, uh, resolution R eighty-four twenty, would someone like to make a motion for this? Tom?
Yeah, I'll make a motion reference, uh, resolution, it's R eighty-four twenty adopting emergency sick leave and family leave policy requi- required by Family First Corona Response Act. Make a motion to approve.
Alright.
I second.
Seconded by Julia, and I believe Finance talked about this, didn't they?
So, wha- what we did is, we did talk about it, but we, we tabled.
No, no, you approved this.
Approved it, approved this one, yep, we wanted to, for the entire discussion, come to council.
Alright, so this part's approved. Is it Sarah or Misty?
Sarah's gonna take the lead on this one.
Sarah, why don't you tell us about this?
Alright, uh, so the new federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act was effective April first. This is a benefit that exempts our emergency responders, that's part of the federal law. Uh, there's two big components of this law that gives benefits for employees and their families, one of them being expanded family medical leave. So, this is for the employees that are at home right now due to childcare, so a daycare facility or a school might be closed, so they're at home. The law provides them paid leave that's at two-thirds of their regular rate of pay, so it's not at a hundred percent. Um, the law also provides emergency paid sick leave for all of our non-responder employees to the equivalent of eighty hours, and that's for about six different reasons that are on the draft policy for you. And that was in the packet today, um, and basically, um, that is the, the two things that is required of the law. And then, we would like to go above and beyond and provide two additional benefits for our, our non-responder employees. One of those is allowing our employees to use a future twenty-twenty accrued sick leave um, to be able to, um, basically supplement the two-thirds pay if they're at home right now to, to care for a child. Um, so that means our employees accrue a, a day a month, and so looking at April, they would have about nine days that would be available to them right now if they would like to use that. Um, the other benefit that we would like to go above and beyond on is providing a hundred percent of pay for reason number four, and that's if they are caring for a family member who has COVID-nineteen. Um, so, right now, the law says we can pay them two-thirds, we don't have to pay them the a hundred percent, but we would like to go above and beyond and provide the a hundred percent. Um, so, the law is something we have to do April first, again, providing that expanded family medical leave and the eighty hours of emergency paid sick leave. Um, and then again, to go above and beyond, allowing employees to tap into future accrued sick time, and then also being able to pay our employees at a hundred percent if they're caring for a, a family member.
Alright, and the reason why we have the next agenda item about the emergency responders is because the law that was passed exempted them, but we want to do something, and so we'll talk more about that. And then this next item, uh, I don't know, Misty, did you wanna add anything to that?
Uh, the only thing that I would add is that the law for other employers allows a tax credit in order to get reimbursed for the cost of providing this leave. As a local government, we are required to provide the leave, but we are not eligible for reimbursement. So we're treating this similar to a budget amendment, even though, at this point, I don't know how much it will cost because I don't know who is going to take the leave, how much those hours have to be backfilled, et cetera. Um, but we're treating it like a budget amendment, requiring the two-thirds vote because we recognize there is a cost associated with it that we will not get reimbursed for.
Alright, Valerie, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, just a couple of items. Uh, one thing that I wanted to mention is that we did have our, our Labor Council review this policy, and so, um, wanted to make sure that even though this is moving very quickly, uh, Congress just passed this law less than a month ago, and it is already effective immediately, or actually effective two weeks ago. Um, so we did have to put it together very quickly, but we spent a lot of time working on it, and they made it a little bit slower, I think, uh, that we at least could anticipate, given the Department of Labor is putting out regulations, um, still, and, um, is ongoing, uh, in terms of putting out additional regulations. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is, as Sarah pointed out, uh, most of what's in this policy is essentially dictated by law. Uh, what we've done is just tailored it a little bit to, to the city of Pittsburgh, but ultimately, I, I would urge the council to add a minimum what the law requires because, uh, really, we have to provide this benefit. And I would also point out that, um, keep in mind, this law wasn't really drafted necessarily from municipal governments who already provide, uh, or many municipal governments provide fairly generous leave packages, but the law does require us to provide these, uh, these benefits above and beyond what we already offer, so no matter how generous our current sick leave balances, um, and, and, and all, um, our benefits are, we still have to adopt additional leave, and that's, that's, that's the state of the federal law, so, that's all I have.
Alright, Pat, is there anything that you wanted to add at all to this one?
No, I, I think they did a good job. You know, I think, uh, at this point, it's probably just up for council discussion.
Okay, yeah, so it's more, mostly what the law is requiring us, but we added a couple things, like Sarah said. Uh, questions on this at all, Dorothy?
Yeah, I've got two.
I'll go Julia next.
Probably both for Misty. Do, are there additional sources of income replacement that employees might be looking at?
Could you repeat the question?
Are there additional sources of income replacement that employees might have access to use?
So, the city does have a fairly generous leave policy. So right now, sick leave is eligible because people are, are isolated or subject to isolation, uh, vacation, personal leave, uh, that type of thing is available. The intention would be that this is for people that are, we have work for them, but they, they can't for various reasons. And our hope is that we wouldn't have to furlough people, for example, because we'll be able to keep them busy or provide other ways to pay for them.
Will, will they be able to use unemployment benefits?
So unemployment would only be eligible if we do furlough people. So my hope, uh, would be that we don't have to furlough employees. Um, I think we have plenty of work to keep people busy for the most part. Uh, you know, an exception to me is the school crossing guard or something like that, that school won't be in session for that much longer. Um, perhaps that person will need to be furloughed, but our, our main employees, we would hope that we continue to pay them and not have to have them go on unemployment.
Okay, and my second question is, you'd mentioned something about if they're caring for family that are sick. If it's going to be fourteen days for them to take care of that sick person, we would presumably want to extend their quarantine passed, um, for another fourteen days or whatever, past the time when we know that they did not get it? How might that factor in? If they have an extended quarantine period?
Sarah, why don't I let you talk about that?
Yeah, so if somebody exhausts their fourteen days, they can go out on an extended leave. So maybe they take care of a family member for that fourteen days, and then they find that they actually have COVID-nineteen and need to be out for fourteen days. They have their paid sick leave that they can tap into or any of their accrued balances. They can use vacation time or comp time. Uh, so there's other benefits available to them. Um, they're eligible for family medical leave, so that gives them up to twelve weeks of a leave for their own serious health condition, so COVID, for example, would qualify. So there's definitely protection for them there if they're, if they use that full eighty hours for caring for a family member and they come down with something, they will be protected.
And we are also, I think Sarah mentioned it earlier, if you didn't hear it, uh, if someone, maybe a newer employee goes through all their sick time, we will let them essentially go negative to, uh, use anything that they would accrue this year, so that, you know, that's another probably nine days, I think. Yeah, so, there'd be nine more days that we typically don't allow anyone to do that, but we would allow for this crisis as well. I have Julia next.
Uh, yeah, this question is for Misty. Uh, Misty, um, have you heard of any financial help to municipality from the general, for the federal government?
So there is, uh, talk about FEMA grants, so this is a category B, uh, issue for FEMA, so there is some opportunity for reimbursement there, not for this leave, however. Uh, FEMA requires that it's based on labor policies that are in place prior to the emergency. So all of this stuff that we're talking about is stuff that we've implemented as a result of the emergency and is not eligible for FEMA reimbursement. Uh, the FFCRA and CARES Act also provided some reimbursement for non-government entities that are required to provide this leave, but as a government, we're not eligible for that either. So this particular leave that we're talking about will be a cost borne by the city.
And what about the new bill that was passed today by Wisconsin? Have you heard that there is any component or any measurement there that to support municipality for this type of emergencies?
So, for the emergency in general, I think there may be some other things coming. There's a lot of discussion about possible policies that they're working on, both at the Wisconsin level and at the federal level. But I don't believe that it will be for this, this particular leave that we're providing. I think it's going to be more for the costs that we incur as a result of the, the pandemic, not the sick leave that we're, we're talking about now.
Okay.
Further questions from anyone? Seeing, oh, Julia, another one?
I wanna make a comment, I think this is a good policy, you know, um, for, uh, for our employees and staff, and, you know, I mean, I'm gonna support.
Alright. Any last comments at all? Oh, it's Sarah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll just, I agree with Julia, and I, I think it's really nice and innovative that, um, Sarah, you went above and beyond, and, or, and staff to go above and beyond, I, this is a, this is a nice thing to do, it's a good message. Nice work.
Alright, thank you. Any last people online at all? Did I miss anyone in chat? Alright. All right. Then if you are in favor, please say aye.
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 If you're opposed, an aye. All right. That is approved. Next one, I will have someone make a motion. I'll have staff kind of explain it, so you know what we're talking about. And we have some people to, that want to speak to this. Would someone like to make the motion for this one? Tom?
Resolution R 85-20, adopting the COVID-19 sick leave for emergency responders. Approval.
Is there a second? I need a second. Oh, I need a second first. I'm still waiting for someone to second it. All right, second by Dan, thank you. Wow. All right, Sarah, go ahead on this one. Explain this.
All righty. So as you can see, the federal law exempted our emergency responders. Our emergency responders are extremely important to the city. They're out there on the front lines. We wanted to provide a benefit to those emergency responders. Those are folks such as our police, our fire, our police telecommunications, our public works, and so on. So what the city proposed was emergency paid sick leave for our emergency responders in the amount of 72 hours. The reason we chose 72 hours was that it got us closer to the 80 hours that our general employees receive, while also being the equivalent of three 24-hour shifts that our firefighters work. So the 72 hours, while it doesn't cover the full two weeks, we also have, not emergency, but we also have the city's sick leave that they can tap into. Just to kind of give you an example, a firefighter earns about 12 hours of vacation per month. So what we would be hoping to do is also extend the same benefit to our emergency responders to receive all of their future sick leave for 2020 right now. So that if they need to tap into that and be out, that they can use that. So, you know, with nine months left, you know, they've got about 108 hours that they would have available right now, and then plus the 72. So that's just an example with firefighters. The one thing I wanted to mention is that the fire union did not agree to the hours that the city proposed offering. Therefore, you'll notice on the resolution that it is stated that if the emergency responder paid sick leave policy is approved, that the resolution authorizes the mayor and staff to execute an MOU with Local 311 to extend the benefits of this new policy as approved to the fire department employees subject to the collective bargaining agreement. So police are on board with the 72, our public works are on board with the 72, and all the other emergency responders, firefighters. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Sarah, could you just speak quick to it? Emergency responders is police and fire, but there's a bunch of other people that are also considered emergency responders. Can you just kind of list some of those off quick for us?
Yeah, yeah. So you're curious who the emergency responders are?
Yeah. Because it's more than just police and fire.
Yeah, so aside from the police and fire, our police telecommunications, our public works maintenance workers, our IT specialists, our IT folks, our IT director, our city administrator. I wish I had it easily accessible.
That's most of it.
I believe that is just about everybody.
So all those people get 72 hours?
All of those folks would receive 72 hours. So that is, you know, our public works, our IT folks work 80 hours every two weeks. So it doesn't quite cover a full two weeks for them. For police, it's 75 hours that they work every two weeks. So again, it doesn't quite cover the full 75. But we have paid sick leave that we provide all city employees, and so they would be able to tap into this. Again, we were trying to just get the number closest to 80. One thing I need to point out is that this does not cover our paid-on-call firefighters or our support workers. So those are our very part-time, although some of them do work quite a few hours. But those are our part-time staff in the fire department. So this is only for full-time emergency responders. Fire is the only one that has part-time LTE staff.
All right, thank you. Misty, do you want to add anything quick?
No, so just the same comments from the other resolution apply here as well. So the city will not be getting reimbursement for offering this coverage. And it is above and beyond what is required to be offered under the law.
All right. Valerie, would you like to add anything quick?
Yeah, just very briefly, I wanted to point out that I think everyone's aware that the FF-CRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, does not apply to emergency responders. And so this is a policy that we're proposing. Obviously, it's up to the council to determine whether it can be adopted in form, but this goes above and beyond what's required by law. And again, these are benefits that we want to provide in addition to the benefit package that already exists and continue.
All right, thank you. We have a few people that want to speak. First is Jason Ladwig. Go ahead, Jason.
All right, good evening. Hope everybody can hear me out there in TV land. For those who don't know me, my name is Jason Ladwig. I've been a Pittsburgh firefighter for the past 27 years, and I've been a full-time member for the last 22. I'm also the Firefighters Local 311 Union Rep for our full-time firefighters. We are here tonight in unity to ask the council members to amend Resolution R 85-20 for the Corona-19 Sick Leave First Responders Act from 72 hours to 96 for the firefighters. As the resolution is currently written, unless Local 311 members agree to 72 hours, we would be exempt. The FF-CRA exempts all emergency responders unless municipality chooses not to exempt them. This sick leave provides paid sick leave to us in the event we are exposed to COVID-19 and are required to be quarantined or isolated or to care for a family member who has COVID-19. We agree on the four reasons for the use of this sick leave. There is no cash value to this extra leave, and it cannot be carried over. Unless this pandemic continues, this leave goes away on December 31st at 11:59. As the council members received emails from us last week outlining our reasons for the sick leave to be increased to 96 hours, we hope all of you had the opportunity to read it. If not, I would like to provide a summary. The 72 hours for workers assigned to the 40-hour work week in a 14-day period are covered under this resolution for 13 of the 14 days that employee would be quarantined. Those employees would then have to use eight hours, one day, of their own sick time to cover the rest of their quarantine. The police department, who averages 35, 36, 37 hours a week, that 72 hours in that resolution covers the officers for 13 and a half out of those 14 days. Their employees would then have to use four hours, a half a day, to cover the rest of their quarantine. For the firefighters, who work 24-hour shifts, and we work a 53-hour work week, that 72 hours only covers eight of the 14 days we'd be in quarantine. And then we would have to use an additional 48 hours, two days, of our own sick time to cover the rest. Now, we were told the city has a sick leave policy for the firefighters, and the firefighters would have enough sick time to cover the extra time needed. Well, that's not totally true. While we have members with 15 years on, they have plenty of sick time. But we also have firefighters who have less than a year on, who have two or three days in their sick bank, because we earn one day every two months, six days a year, where every other city employee earns one day a month, or 12 days a year. While 96 hours appears to be more than the others, it's really not. It equals out to the same in the end. 24 hours equals one day for us. Eight hours equals one day for the other staff. I almost done, sorry. By amending the resolution to the 96 hours, we will now be covered for 12 days out of that quarantine and only have to use one day of our sick time. And this would match the 40-hour employees and also the police department. Our brothers and sisters of Fitzroan EMS, who we share the same stations, respond to the same emergency calls with, just signed an MOU with the EMS commission for 96 hours, because they work a 48-hour work week. So they're covered for the entire 14-day quarantine. All the rice sits on that commission. The paid-on-call members are not covered under this resolution. While firefighters Local 31 does not represent that group, however, we stand shoulder to shoulder with them on calls, and they can get exposed just as easy as we can. The city of Manona gave their firefighters 112 hours. The city of Madison 96, Oregon 96. And Deer Grove said, whatever you need. We've kept Chief Povermacher in the loop of what our intentions were. We have the full support of the Pittsburgh Police Department and Fitzroan EMS on our quest to get our hours raised to 96. Thank you for your time and attention in this matter, and I hope we all support this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Ted, thank you. Ted, coming up. You're next. I heard that's their order anyway. All right.
So for those that don't know me, I'm Ted Higgins, Secretary-Treasure, Firefighters Local 31. I'm the business agent, more or less, for the Pittsburgh Fire, and also a veteran, 17-year veteran firefighter, just like Jason. Jason summarized it really well, and I want to give credit to Valerie and Sarah also for summing it up really, really well. And as Pat said at the onset of tonight's meeting, this is business as unusual. It's weird for us to be at a meeting advocating for an extra benefit, which we do realize the city doesn't have to do it, and you're doing it anyway. And we appreciate that. I want to get that out there first and foremost. Those 72 hours is something. Something is definitely better than nothing. Sarah was alluding to the fairness factor, which we completely understand as we hope best for our fellow city employees, whether they be police, fire, EMS, streets, IT, everybody. But I just wanted to speak to reiterate what Jason said. The important metric, I think, that's getting overlooked is, as he said, 72 on a number line is closer to 80 that the generals are getting. But what we should be, the number we need to be focusing on, not is what number is closest to 80 per se. It should be for those 14 days. The virus doesn't care if you're streets, IT, police, fire, EMS. And the CDC doesn't care. And so we're trying to follow the best public health guidelines, and we want to keep our people out of the firehouses for that 14-day period. So we know now, as Jason said, if you work Sunday, Wednesday, Saturday in the police department, it would cover those three shifts, and then you would have the Tuesday, Friday on your own. That's 48 hours of our own paid time. And as he said, the other employees, when we talk about fairness, when you look at it that way, is the cost it would be to a firefighter. It actually, working a 53-hour work week, the closest average we could come up with is actually 106 hours. We're only asking for the 96. We're totally okay with and accept using some of our own paid time. We're just asking for one more 24-hour period. That would still leave us above and beyond our fellow coworkers of having to use our own paid time. So we want to thank the city for what you've done so far, coming this far at 72 hours. And we're only asking for that extra 24 hours to be, to have parity with EMS, Fitzroan paramedics. And like Jason said, the cops, I know that comes into question too, is what were the cops going to say? And do they feel they're with us on this? The police union is with us on this. So they want to be able to, you know, they know that they're covered for 13 and a half of their 14 days. They'd like to see us covered for as much as well. So I don't think there's animosity that way. As far as reimbursement to the city, we have, Maile and Mitchell will be coming up after me or president to talk more about that. But thank you for listening to us and for extending what leave you already have. We just want, just that 24 hours more would be excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Maile, coming up.
I only get three minutes?
Yeah.
All right. Cut just in half for them. Thank you all for having us and letting us come to at least hear us speak about this issue. For those of you I've never met, my name is Maile Mitchell. I am President of Firefighters Local 31, 24-year vet in the city of Madison. I'm actually Pittsburgh, close to 20-year resident of Pittsburgh, live right around the street here for a long time. Just moved, though, so make that clear. But we are here, and I don't want to repeat what my colleagues, my brothers have just said, but we're here dealing with a pandemic that most of us don't know when it's going to end. The virus is going to tell us essentially when this is going to stop, when we have to stop being six feet apart and being in an empty room like this, talking to each other. So I commend you for putting forth an effort to take care of not just the firefighters and police officers, but all the city staff here in Pittsburgh. It's one of the reasons why I lived here for so long, because I actually love this community. I really do. But as firefighters, our first job, if you talk to any firefighter, is life safety. And life safety meaning that we cannot protect others if we do not first be able to protect ourselves. Your firefighters that are here asking for, not a handout, mind you. Hopefully, none of them have to use any of this emergency sick leave at all. We hope that none of them have to use the 72 hours right now that you're providing. What they're asking is for parity with their brothers and sisters or colleagues and the general staff, because we work 53-hour work weeks here in the city of Pittsburgh. So as Ted Higgins said, that wouldn't even cover the amount of time. But we're asking for 96 hours, because that's been the standard for the most part around Dane County. So that's what we're asking for. When it comes to reimbursements, I get the opportunity as being state president to get to talk with state elected officials a lot. And we talk about the FF-CRA, and there's going to be $300 million coming to the state for that. And it didn't take out firefighters. It gave the option for municipalities to exclude their firefighters. And that's what you chose to do here, which is fine. Most municipalities have. The CARES Act, there's going to be $2.2 billion coming into the state that the governor will be able to use to give back to municipalities to help cover some of the losses that were occurring under COVID-19. So there will be money, and we hear there's going to be another fourth COVID-19 relief for stimulus that's coming from the federal government. So there will be money there to help backfill and help municipalities pay for some of these costs when it comes to COVID-19 and when it comes to firefighters. So all we're asking is something real simple, and that is to be treated like everyone else that you're treating. And that is two weeks off. Again, hopefully, no one has to use this. But realize that we also have spouses and partners at home as well that are scared, that don't know when this is going to end, that don't have jobs, some that are being furloughed, some that are being taken off the job. So we have to provide for our families. And all we're asking again is that you can provide a little bit of certainty. If we have to be self-quarantined, or if we are, that's three minutes already? Okay, I'll have to wrap it up quick. But if we do, there's not a lot of people behind me. But if our members have to be self-quarantined, or if they do, God forbid, have COVID-19, that they can have that two weeks needed to come back to work. When it comes to COVID-19, there's limited testing. The results are not coming back quickly, so we don't know if we have it. And we don't know if we can get back to the job and get back on our fire truck and take care of our community. So all we're asking is for the 96 hours, which is not a huge stretch, that we need to have the two weeks, so that we can also have the same two weeks as our brothers and sisters and general employees are getting and expect. So with that, we thank you. Thank you for your time, and I thank you for allowing us to speak today. I had about five more minutes, but I'll spare you that.
Thank you. All right. That's what I have for public comments. People on council, questions, comments at all? Let's see, Julia, go ahead.
Yes. I have several questions regarding this resolution. You know, when we talk, one of them, when we publicly recommend 14 days for quarantine, when people start having the symptoms. So my question is, okay, 14 days, you know, and here we are, we are giving the 72 hour to the people that they are in the front row, and they are going to have more probability of get exposure to this virus. I have a concern, you know, I have a question about, if public health are recommending 14-day quarantine when people get sick, one of our firefighters or emergency responders get sick, so we're giving them only 72 hour. And I understand that this is an additional package that the city is providing to emergency responders, and it's a very generous package. I understand that some of these, you know, the firefighter, the police, or some other group, they have a very nice sick leave package. I, you know, I know all of that. But I, my question is about how we come as short? How we come as short to the people that they are protecting us the most? Okay? And also, I have a question that I want to know why the part-time people are not covered here? Why are the people on call are not covered here? You know, part-time people works. you know, what are the difference in full-time, part-time, you know, in this emergency? You know, the virus doesn't discriminate your full-time or part-time or on-call. So I think we need to be more fair if we are going to, you know, if we are providing this type of, you know, I know additional help or additional sick leave, but I, you know, I have all these questions in my mind. And this is why I am willing to put a man amendment to this resolution to add the 96 hour to the firefighter.
So Julia, to address your first concern, one of the things we were hoping is to allow for emergency responders to receive their 2020 accrued sick time ahead of time. So any time that they would accrue for the rest of this year would be available to them right now, just as we wanted to do in what was approved for our general employees, our non-emergency responder employees. So that's one way to make sure people do stay on quarantine for 14 days and not come back because they don't have the time. We want to make sure they know they have the time, and we allow for them to use that. In regards to your second concern about part-time staffs, we do have a illness and accident and illness policy that is an additional policy that the city pays for for our part-time employees. This is in case of, you know, any injury or illness. I was talking to our VFIS, which is our accident and illness policy carrier last week, and COVID-19 potentially could be something that they would cover. So of course, though, it has to be within the scope of their responsibility as a paid-on-call firefighter. They have to tie it to a specific incident where the person was positive and they had symptoms. So there is the potential of it being denied. It's not 100%. But basically, that pays them any hours they mess with the city of Pittsburgh and for their full-time jobs. So a lot of our paid-on-call also have full-time jobs outside of just being on-call for the city of Pittsburgh. We do have various hours. We have some paid-on-call that work, you know, close to full-time hours. We have some that work very few hours. So trying to identify how much sick leave we would give to employees who are so limited term in terms of limited hours could be rather difficult. We don't give sick leave now to our paid-on-call firefighters or support workers or fire science interns. And those are all part-time staff in our fire department. I agree with you. They're emergency responders. They're right there next to our firefighters. It's just we don't provide sick leave now as a benefit to them. So we just move forward with providing it for our full-time employees, because they are already part of our benefits.
Yeah, glad you got it, Julia. Yep, glad, Julia.
So I, you mentioned a couple of things that I would say. You said you talked to the insurance company for the part-time, and you said you use the word potential, that you're not sure that they are going to cover this. So I don't like that. I want to be more assertive. You know, I want to be sure that it's going to happen. Second, you mentioned that some on-call people, they have full-time on the side, okay? And maybe they are protected in the other employers. But if I am an employer and I have on-call people doing a work in the community, because they really love the community, they want to help, and they have COVID, working for the city of Pittsburgh, and then they say, oh, I want to use the sick leave from, you know, from the company that they're working. So I don't think that is fair. You know what I mean? And I understand that. I understand. But, you know, as an employer, you know, you need to put an employer's shoe too and say, you know, he got COVID, you know, doing his job on call as a firefighter for the city of Pittsburgh, but they don't have any protection or any, you know, sick leave there or anything. So then he's going to use my sick leave from my, you know, you know, for this employee. So I, you know, I mean, what I want to, what I want to say to all of our, to my fellow elders, that, you know, I hope, you know, that people mention their, you know, the people that speak, spoke. I hope that we never have to use this. You know what I mean? But I have, this is our role to give the peace of mind to the people that they are there, you know what I mean? And they have more chances to get COVID than I have working from home remotely, in my home office, you know what I mean? So, so I don't know. I will, this is why I understand that this is a very generous, you know, gesture from the city, and I applaud that. But we are under a pandemic. We are under, living something that we never experienced in our life. The whole planet is on hold. Not that this bit is killing people. And, you know, and I want more protection for the people that they are there. These firefighters are the one that they are going to, you know, they're going to go, or, you know, the paramedics, they are going to go to, you know, to the action where sometimes this is happening. They have more chances to get the virus. So, and I also, I want to mention that, you know, FIDRON already approved the Morander of Understanding for 96, 96 hours. So these two units work inside each other. So why one is having 96 and the other one 72? I think I am talking about to be fair. That's it.
All right. Thank you. I just want to make a few comments. I think, you know, Julia hit on one of the things that is so hard about this, is there's so many unknowns, you know? Maybe we're at the flat part of the curve. Maybe it's going to get really bad again. And it's really difficult to know, you know, what's going to happen or not happen. You know, just because if we do 72 or 96, whatever, if this does blow up, there's nothing to say we can't come back later and do more hours if that is a problem, if this does happen. I would say a few other things. I think, you know, other municipalities are kind of all over the board. Some are 96, some are 100, some are zero. And so all the municipalities are all over the board. I know City of Verona is at 72. I don't know if that's approved, but that's the current offer for City of Verona firefighters is 72 hours. EMS, I know they're a higher amount, but they also haven't said that they'll let employees go negative on their sick balances either. So that is a difference between the two. But, you know, I'll tell you something that I said in the department head meetings, and now it's on camera, so you can hold me to this. But I told department heads, I said, you know, for our full-time staff, we're going to take care of those people. And, you know, if something happens and someone has to be sick, and then their spouse is sick, and then their kids are sick, and all of a sudden they have all this time because of COVID, we're going to take care of those people and make sure that they're not losing income. I mean, to me, that's the most important thing that I want our staff throughout all of our departments to know, is that if something, again, there's so many unknowns. They don't know what's going to happen. If something happens and someone has to be out for a long time and they blow through their sick time, that's, you know, this is such an unusual circumstance that we can't anticipate. We need to take care of those people. We need to make sure that we are giving those, the people, the peace of mind that they're not going to lose income. There's things that we can do if we need to in special circumstances. It might be one person. Well, let's, you know, take care of that person. So I guess that's really all I have right now. Are there other people that would like to? Tom, did you raise your hand? Yeah, go ahead.
Sarah, how did EMS get 96 hours?
Are you referring to me?
Yeah. How did EMS, how did EMS get 96 hours?
I, I don't know. I think it was just the discussion between, I'm not exactly sure how that transpired, but yeah, I do know that is for sure 96 hours. Sorry, I'm not helpful there.
They have a different governing board, Tom.
Okay. Do you know, or?
Yeah, they have a different governing board. They're not part of the city. We have one representative on that governing board.
I think they were trying to thread the needle a little bit between Verona and Pittsburgh. Originally, Verona had offered, I believe, 106 hours, but it was only for the employee if they tested positive for COVID. So it was very restrictive. And, you know, we aren't very restrictive at all on how we are letting people use the 72 hours. And that was, for what I've told anyway, that, you know, the union said, no, take a, you know, not interested in that. And so I think they're just trying to thread that needle. And then City of Verona came back with the 72, which is, I think, similar to us and the restrictions we have because of that. So I think they're trying to balance that out a little bit. And then kind of what was getting offered got changed a little bit, too.
Yeah, let me speak to that if I can for a second.
Please.
So really, you know, first of all, their, their structure is different. The way that they get their, their sick time is different. A number of their compensation elements are different. And so one of the other challenges that we've got is that what Pittsburgh does is not necessarily always precisely what Verona does. And so my, my recommendations to, to Pat Anderson was to really try to balance the needs of both of those communities and do the right thing for his people and finding it something that was smart in the middle, since there are a lot of moving parts on this. And so I think that's, that's part of it. We also had some union conversations that were going on in there. And so between the COVID and the two different communities and the different structure for sick leave, this is ultimately, I think, where they found something that they felt like was reasonable.
Yeah, go ahead. Keep going, Tom.
I guess, Misty, am I thinking right on these hours, just hours in general? I'm looking at, if I, I think I have this right. The cops were 72, EMS was 96, fire was 72. And if these hours aren't used, correct me if I'm wrong. If these hours aren't used, hopefully, we don't have to use them. No one gets sick. They can't, they cannot be put in a, they can't be put in the bank. They probably just go away at the end of the year. Am I thinking right? Is that right?
Yep.
Now I'm going to switch gears a little bit for the city council. You know, I don't care too much about Verona, and I don't care about Oregon. And I don't really care about Madison right now. I care about Pittsburgh. And the best way to have a morale problem is just like this, where we have 72 hours for one group, 96, which I think is high, for another group, 72 for another group, and they're all doing the same thing. That creates a morale problem in the city, I think. Cops talk to firefighters. Firefighters talk to EMS. Firefighters, if I'm not mistaken, live with EMS. Firefighters talk to cops, and it goes right around the horn. So my suggestion is all for one. It's all for one. If we can come up with some number, I know Pat, probably you and the mayor worked on this. You know, we're, if they're all the same, maybe 96. And it might, the big question here, in my heart and my mind, is we hope they don't have to use it. If they don't use it, I don't like, in the cops field, it was if you don't use it, you lose it. That's not how this works. We hope they don't have to use it so we can give it back, or whatever it may be. But you want a morale problem, which I don't want, which I don't think anyone wants, is we had to get somehow where these numbers are somewhat close, or you're talking 24 hours on some of this. 24, 72, 96? I would just encourage, encourage us a little bit to get them closer. Just, that's all I'm saying. Just get them closer. I don't have a crystal ball. Maybe give a number, you know, 90 hours for everybody. And then if they're not used, they go back in the bank. God willing, we don't have to use any of these hours, but no one knows. No one in this city knows what's going to happen. And if you do, make sure you talk to the president. No one knows. So why don't we just get something that we can all agree on? That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge we had is because the firefighters have taken it 24-hour increments, that it's either 24 or 96. And, you know, everyone has different works, weeks and stuff like that. And so if you want to do an exception for the firefighters, but there's not really an equal solution across the board, because if you give everyone 96, then some people have, you know, a week and a half, or no, not quite a week and a half, but there's never going to be an equal. If you give everyone the same amount, you know, it depends on what you're looking to equalize, I guess. Are you trying to equalize two weeks, or a number of hours, or a combination of the two? So that's the challenge. Pat, you want to speak to that?
Well, and also, I mean, you can't give everybody equal, right? Because the federal law states that it's 80 hours for all the non-emergency response people. So that's written in stone. 80 hours for 50% of our employees, let's say. That's written in stone. So what we're doing above and beyond that is trying to figure out how to get the emergency responders, not just fire, not just police, but fire, police, dispatch, EMS, IT, public works, my position, all these positions compensated at the same level as the federal law is providing in this case. And that's where it's difficult.
Yeah, go ahead, Valerie. Yeah, go ahead.
So the policy that the council just adopted previous to considering this item, that's the FF-CRA policy that we were required to adopt, and that policy does reflect 80 hours of additional sick leave for the non-emergency responders personnel. So again, it's up to you as a council what you want to adopt. But if you're looking for consistency with the policy, the previous policy, that number is 80 hours for full-time employees.
All right. I know Julia has, wants to do an amendment, but I have a Dorothy, and I don't know if anyone else wants to speak before she does that. Go ahead, Dorothy.
Yeah, one of the notes that I'm writing down, probably between Misty and Sarah, is there a reasonable way, and I would think the answer is yes, to come up with the number of average hours that people work in a year and pay them whatever percent of their average hours, rather than, say, everybody gets the same amount? Or if the firefighters work X number of hours, including part-time people, on average, can we come up with 8% of average hours worked and use that as an equation for how to come up with the number of hours they'd be eligible for? So if the average is someone works an average of eight hours in a week, and we say we want to pay 100% for two weeks, that they would qualify for 16 hours worth of pay?
Well done.
Yeah, Dorothy.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Sorry, Dorothy. Yeah, so we do track hours for all of our paid-on calls. So that would be something pretty easy that we could, could do. Misty, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I would say payroll is very complicated right now. So to manually calculate too many things for too many large groups of people is going to be labor-intensive.
Speaking of large groups, we've talked about the different types. But how many people are we talking about potentially?
We've got about 45 or so paid-on-call. We've got a handful of fire science interns and a handful of support workers.
How many part-time employees do we have in the city or just?
Hold on, people online, you can't just speak because it, it gets out of control. So, hold on. And Chief Paul Vermaeker, you know, wants to say something quick, so I'm gonna ask him to speak quick. And I have, Julia, I think, is the one who is speaking next, so I can go after that.
So one of the things I think that we, first of all, I appreciate the, the fair and equitable. I think that's exactly the way that we need to go, because we need to represent a number of different employees across the board. The, I think the letter of the, the act was in order to address two weeks, seventeen, fourteen days of, of, of a, of a leave associated with a quarantine. I, I do want to bring one thing to your attention, the way that the contract is bargained. We bargain our contract two different ways. One that represents basically the annual salary, but then we have two different groups of employees, the fifty-six-hour employee, or the one that works a twenty-four-hour shift, and the forty-hour employee. And the difference between the two is about eight dollars an hour. So one of the things that we tried to address is the fact that no firefighter should get paid more than another one. So if they're working an eighty-hour work schedule or a ninety-six, they don't get paid anymore. So one of the things that I think we need to just take into account is the fact that ninety-six hours doesn't give them any more than their eighty-hour counterpart if they were working a forty-hour work week. Just, it's something to consider, and I, I want to put it out there in advance, because I'm sure that's the type of thing that will come back if we discuss that from, from a negotiation standpoint. And I can appreciate the fact that this is something that's above and beyond. But I think the, the letter of, the intent of, of the act was to, to help those out for about two weeks, the, the time of, of quarantine. And I can appreciate the, the difficult decisions that have to be made. I just want to make sure that you're fully aware of all of the information that, that is available to, to address that decision.
Julia, I have you next. Go ahead.
So one of my questions to Sarah was to know how many part-time firefighters we have, because now we know that we have forty, forty-five on call. So that one, I want to know, you, how many part-time people we're talking?
Yep, so we've got about forty-five paid-on call, about five or so interns and five or so support workers. So that's our total part-time staff in the fire department.
Paid-on call is part-time in the fire department?
Yeah, please note, though, Julia, we have a lot more part-time employees in the city than just the fire department.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay.
But can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, Julia.
A question?
Yep, go ahead.
So the other, the other part-time people, that they are no, they are no emergency responder, are covered in the other resolution that we passed?
The FFCRE does require that all employees are covered under the, the policy that you just passed. So yep, so all employees are covered, even part-time.
Okay, can I ask another question?
Yep.
How many, how many part-time employee will not be covered under, you know, in this resolution? You know, because we have, some of them are covered in the other resolution that we passed. I want to know how many are part-time employee that they are not gonna be covered at all?
So it would be about fifty-five fire part-time employees that would not be covered under the emergency responder, because they're considered emergency responders. So they were not considered as part of the other policy. So I should, I should correct what I said. So the policy that you just approved, all the employees who are non-emergency responders, full-time, part-time are covered. Yep. But we're looking at about fifty-five emergency responder, part-time staff that would not be covered.
Fifty-five, okay.
Yeah, I think, Julia, one of the challenges is, in some ways, it's comparing apples to oranges, because a part-time person that is not an emergency responder, kind of has like guaranteed twenty hours a week, and paid-on call, they have some minimum requirements. Some people work a lot of hours, but, you know, they don't necessarily have to work any in a pay period. It's, it's set up so different. That's the challenge we're having, you think, even just on how many hours should they be in general, is that it's, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. So that's the biggest challenge.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
One other thing that I don't understand, and I want to understand this thing, I know that the city is doing this generous additional sick leave for emergency responder. I don't understand, if we are doing this, why we don't, why we don't include the part-time people and also the paid-on call people? You know, if we are gonna do it because it's something that we want to do from our heart, because we want to help, why we made that distinction? You know, this is, I want to understand the logic behind it. It's about money? It's about money? I want to understand that. Because for me, you know, it doesn't matter, I am not gonna ask the firefighter when he come to, to my radio and say, are you a full-time or part-time? You don't pay a call, you know what I mean? For me, it's a firefighter. I don't care if it's a full-time, part-time, or paid-on call, you know what I mean? So this is what I want to understand first, because I am not understanding this part. And this is what I want to put in amendment now, right now, to increase the hours to the firefighter to ninety-six, and also to include the part-time people, and to have some also help, additional help to the paid-on call people.
Yeah, Chief Vermaeker has something to add here, quick.
Julia, they, they are taking care of, all of our part-time employees have full-time jobs elsewhere and are covered under the act that you previously approved. So they are actually covered by their full-time employer in the event that they contract this virus. So the good news is, is we are keeping an eye on them. As far as a workers' comp situation, we will continue to, to submit for workers' comp. We have an umbrella policy or a supplemental policy that covers them in the event that it is covered under workers' comp. We know that it's a virus, so that's gonna be suspect to begin with. But from the Family First Coronavirus Act, they should be covered by their full-time employer.
All right, thank you. Dorothy?
Response to that, to Joe, what we're talking about, for the most part, is income replacement. If people are working, making money for the city, particularly if they're making a reasonable amount of money, we're saying that we're not going to participate in helping them to replace that income. And they would only get income replaced from their full-time job, and their family would have an income shrink as a result.
For about fourteen days, yes. While they're, while they're in isolation, the other thing that we will do with every exposure is to submit for workers' comp and hope for the best. We do have a policy for our part-time workers that way, and we have a policy for our full-time workers. From a full-time perspective, most, most of our, our firefighters don't rely on the fire department for their, their livelihood, and we take that into account as well. But like the mayor said, he, he is trying to address what is hopefully going to operate in the best interests of our employees, and hopefully their, their, their sickness and the way that it's contracted will provide them with about a fourteen-day quarantine.
Okay. And when you say workman's comp, you're saying that that would replace their income?
We have a supplemental policy that addresses our paid-on calls specifically. Because of the fact that we know that our city policy is only gonna cover their part-time wages, the supplemental policy will take a look at what their weekly income is with their full-time employment and their part-time employment. So we pay for that in advance as a protection measure for them, understanding that they could get hurt doing their part-time work, and it would put them in financial jeopardy.
Any idea what rules they have about COVID for those employees?
You know, COVID, COVID-
Would they be covered or not?
Yeah, this is unprecedented, and I really can't answer exactly what's gonna happen. All we can do is operate in the best interest of the firefighter and submit on their behalf and answer as many questions as it pertains to their exposure.
And if they ended up quarantined because someone in their household is quarantined, then they will not be covered, correct?
They would be covered under their full-time employment at that point, yes.
But only for their full-time income?
Correct.
Further comments or questions before, I know Julia said she wants to do an amendment, but I want to make sure people get a chance to speak before she does that.
I've got, um-
Would you have more, Dorothy?
Yeah, I gotta be a bad guy in some ways. And this one's for Joe.
And now Julia next.
What precautions are you guys taking at the stations at this point?
We, we are taking advantage of a number of different precautions. I don't know that I can explain all of them in this setting, but, you know, if you want to stop by the fire station, I'll, I'll walk you through the additional policies that we put into place. I'll address the, the additional cleaning that we put into place, and some of the, the distancing standards that we've upheld inside the fire station.
Okay, the reason I ended up wanting to ask that is because as I came into the building, I had to break up a cluster of guys that were standing right by the doorway, like all right next to one another, and I'm like, six feet, guys.
Right. So the, the issue is, and we're, we're very cautious with our enforcement, we try to maintain that six-foot distance, understanding that a conversation happens the way that it does. We try to minimize that close contact for less than ten minutes. That's the standard that we've been given at this point. The, the ten-minute gives us an idea that there is not likely to be the exposure, but we don't know what we don't know.
Well, I, I do not, one of, one of your guys that ends up coming in as a carrier to pass it to the whole station, and all of a sudden they'll-
Oh, I gave them an order. I told them that they couldn't be carriers. And I apologize for my hair. This is what you get with three weeks of, of social distancing.
Uh-huh. Yeah, we, we need to open barber shops first, once things start to reopen.
All right. Let's go on. Julia, I have you next.
Yeah, this, I need to ask a question to the chief. So, so chief, my question to you is, so you are okay with the policy for the part-time, the current policy for part-time, for pay-on call?
I'm, I'm okay with the policy for part-time because of the fact that we are working with them to address their, their rights and their benefits through full-time employment, and then whatever we can provide from a workers' comp standpoint.
And what about the pay-on calls?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
The paid-on call is part-time.
Yeah, that, paid-on call is part-time.
Oh, okay.
I don't even know where to look. I'm looking at a bunch of different places, so I don't-
You can stare in my eyes if you want.
Oh, thank you. Link.
Another comment that I want to make is, if we use, can I ask another question?
Yeah, yep.
Is when we use our working compensation sometime, you know, when we need to renew, because we have a percent, it can increase. So maybe there are some chances in, in the future that, you know, if we don't use the working compensation, if they get sick, that we are gonna have some funding for the federal government to cover this emergency relief, you know what I mean? So-
I'm, I'm a realist. I wouldn't, I wouldn't rely on anything from a workers' comp standpoint with COVID until we figure more things out.
Okay.
We will submit.
Julia, oh, Dorothy, go ahead.
Then I have another bad guy question, probably for Sarah or Aaron. And I'm not saying that we have employees that would take advantage, but what kind of documentation are we going to require to kind of keep people honest about the actual need for taking a couple extra weeks off of work?
Yes, so we have forms already developed. We've, we have already started actually having some folks out with symptoms, but fortunately all came back negative. So we, so far have received medical documentation, just confirming that they were seen by a doctor. So we, we are requiring all of the necessary medical documentation and signed forms, including if they decide to use future accrued sick time, that if they leave the city before the end of the year, and they've used all that time, that they'll pay the city with their last, you know, coming out the last track. So I mean, we have a lot of measures in place, and we're, we're doing a really good job of documenting that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see anyone else. So Julia, do you want to do your amendment?
Yes, I would like to amend the resolution and add nine-six hours for the firefighters.
All right. Is there a second?
Okay, second.
I heard a second, I think, from Ann. And, all right, so further discussion.
Question for her.
Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
I have a question for you, Julia. You said ninety-six for firefighters only, not cops? Do you want to include the cops as well? Make it across the board?
I don't know. I don't know if we say, I don't know if they are happy with the seventy-two hour, no one is there, and-
I'll speak for him. Do you want a friendly amendment, that they, we include them as well?
If you are gonna support it, yes.
Yeah, I will. Otherwise, everyone just said it.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. You can't just keep, start talking, especially the people online. So you're saying you want ninety-six hours for the police department, because they don't work ninety-six hours in two weeks?
I'm keeping my comments consistent. Across the board, there's no morale problem, there's no, you can, I, you know-
And I guess the other question would be-
I mean, I just, if you don't wanna, if you don't wanna go with, I like to see everybody the same. That's all I'm saying. Everybody the same. You get a morale problem, this is the best way to have it.
And what about other first responders, like Public Works, IT, those types of people?
Well, it seems to me that the, the city had all these people, including the administrator, IT, information technology. I mean, I wasn't really going there. I was just talking about the people on the street.
Streets department's on the street. It's in their title.
Now you're gonna tell me that others go to, I- I'm gonna stick to, to me, emergency responders, and I'm not saying these other people aren't important, they aren't, but I'm just saying cops, firefighters, ambulance. We already have ambulance, I'm sorry. I mean-
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
I'm referring to was fire and police. That's all I was referring to.
Okay. All right. So that's the suggestion, anyway. I have Dan and then Dorothy.
Okay. So I'll, I'll speak to this. I'm gonna say this. Appreciate your comments. I think what the, the firefighters are looking for is ninety-six hours, and the reason being because you have a series of twenty-four-hour shifts over two weeks. You want to quarantine for two weeks if you come in contact with COVID, and for that reason, that's why you're looking for ninety-six as opposed to seventy-two. Otherwise, in the two-week period, you're short twenty-four hours. Is that my understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Tom is saying, well, if we're gonna do that for them, you gotta do it for everyone across the board. Is that what you're saying?
Basically.
And I like the idea of, of, of equity across the board. I've always said that. So-
That's equality.
Yeah, equality. So I, I think if we're gonna do it, I, I think do it across the board. I do, I kind of agree with that.
Well, the other thing-
So hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. And when you say, can I just clarify, so you mean two weeks pay of whatever that hours is for all first responders? So it might be eighty, it could be ninety-six, it could be whatever? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I have Dorothy next. I'll come back to you, Tom.
Okay. I keep this graphic handy on my iPad, and I bring it out now and again. It compares what is equality and what is equity. People have different circumstances. If you give the same people, if you give everybody the same number of boxes, they're going to equally be different. In, in this graphic, it shows three different heights of people trying to watch a ballgame over, over the fence at the ballfield. And there's three boxes, three people. If they each stand on the box, the tall guy is way above the fence, the middle guy can still see, and the little guy still can't see. But if you give two boxes to the short guy, then he can see above the fence, the middle guy can still see above the fence, and the tall guy can still see above the fence. We do not want to just give everybody the same amount. That does not bring about equity. That is equality, and that's a big thing that we ought to be aware of and be careful about.
Tom.
Dorothy.
I have Julia next.
Who's, who's next?
I don't.
Tom, Tom's right now, and then I have Julia after, Tom.
Dorothy. I'm glad and I'm not glad you brought your boxes out, because let me give you some examples. When the houses blew up on Cheryl at Fish Hatchery Road, we didn't have tall people or short people, we had fire, we had police, we had EMS, we probably brought in DCI. EMS, emergency responders are emergency responders, don't mix them up with boxes. Don't do that to us. I know what you're trying to say, but let's go further. If we get a bank robbery and shots are fired and somebody in the bank gets injured, I can guarantee you probably all of the above I just mentioned will go. So, when you're in the field, they all help each other, they all respond together. And what do they do? They protect the citizens of the city. I was elected for two reasons. I was elected to take care of life and property, in that order. And that's what every elected official, and there's so many in the city of Wisconsin in this country that have forgotten what they're elected for. Life and property is what we do. That's why we're here. That's my answer to your boxes.
All right, I've got Julia next, and then Dana for that.
You know, I, okay, so I, I understand your position, Tom, but I think we need to, the police department, they have different hour, they work different hours, so I think we need to, you know, and I think they are, you know, if we, if we do the mass, the 72-hour, they are, you know, they cover the two weeks. I think that, I want to, you know, I want to, to stress that my position is to, right now is to the 96-hour for the firefighter.
All right, I've got Dan next.
So, I don't have a problem, kind of with Tom again, I, you know, I, I got to tell you, I, if you're going to do, I don't have a problem with the 96, and now let me say this about this whole thing. I don't suspect that, that too many people are going to use this, but it is something the city is offering in addition to, to other benefits. I'd like to see the same for emergency personnel across the board. And so if you go to 96, you know, fine, go to 96, but then just do it for all emergency personnel. I think that that's reasonable. I, you know, because then you're right, I, I think that you have a situation where people are, are saying, you know, geez, why, we're only getting 72, and, and the stuff we, you know, they'll start to get into the different components of their job, and I just don't want that. I think we should pick a number and, and go with it for, for emergency personnel. You have two classifications within city, city, within the city of employees, and we're talking emergency personnel, which are now at 72. I kind of like your position.
What happened, Danny, is EMS gave us the number, EMS gave us the number. That's where the number came from.
All right, I've got Dorothy next.
Okay. If we say police work an 80-hour work week, and we said firefighters work how many hours for a full-time work week?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
So our, our two weeks would be 106.
So 106. So what we're saying is, we're going to give the police the same amount of income replacement money that we give firefighters when there is such a disparity in the number of hours that they work. That doesn't work for me. We're talking income replacement. We're not talking about giving everybody the same thing. We should replace income in an equitable fashion.
I have both Janelle and then Sarah, and then I think Tom is going to be up for that. Go ahead, Janelle.
I'm with Tom and Dan on this one. I think we already heard on a handful of occasions earlier this evening that if we are not equal, that groups will compare their number to the other group, and it causes morale issues.
All right, thank you. I've got Sarah next, go ahead, Sarah Schrader.
And for this one, I definitely am sensitive to having equality without a doubt, but I guess the lens that I'm looking at it is that it's days, and if we look at it as, from a days perspective, I think that is where I'm aligning with Julia and Dorothy, that we're giving the same amount of days from a coverage perspective, and that that's how we're trying to. Things up there. I feel comfortable with the 96 for the firefighters, and I also think if I heard Jason earlier, he said that the police supported this initiative, so it sounds like, and I know it's unfortunate that they don't have representation, but it still sounds as though they're potentially looking at this the same way, and it's that it's a days, not an hour thing, where we're getting the 13 days covered for every group, so every group would just have to take one day of their own personal time to cover this pandemic.
I know that staff had, it presented this to the police union as well, and the police union, you know, just said, yeah, okay, we'll take the 72 hours, so they didn't question it or say, you know, we, we should get 80 or 96, or I don't know, 75, whatever their amount is, so. Uh, let's see here, Tom, did you want to?
Just a, just one thing, I'm, and then I'm.
Go ahead.
Just one thing, and then I'm done. I'm, I've said what I want to say, but, you know, as all of we, as all of us know, we're in, we're in water that we've never been in before, and even when I hear a couple alders say, I'm okay giving the firefighters 96, and EMS 96, but 24, we won't give the cops. And yet they respond to the same type of calls, and they put their life on the line the same way the others do, and we're sitting here arguing about 24. You tell I was a cop? But the fact is, is do it across the board, or don't do it at all. Leave it the way it is then. We're talking about hours here, about things that can be life-threatening. I just, I'm not, I'm not computing what you're saying here. 24 hours for the rest of them. I'm just saying across the board, like Dan and I were saying, that's all I'm saying.
Scott, did you have someone online?
Uh, she asked to, to, to.
Oh, all right. Dorothy?
What we're saying is, we want to replace our employees' income with two weeks worth of pay for them minus a bit, to help them to pay their bills, whatever, to do, to maintain some halfway sense of normalcy financially. We're not saying we want to pay the firefighters for two weeks worth of their pay and give an equal amount to police, which would be more like three weeks worth of their pay. That would not be equal. We, the equality, or the, the equality in that is that we're looking to replace people's income with up to two weeks worth of pay for needing to take time off. It's the two weeks that is the equalizer.
All right, so I don't think I have anyone else that wants to speak at this point. So right now, we have Julia's amendment, which is to make it 96 hours for the fire departments. So that's where we're at right now, and so we have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the, the major piece of it after that. So, right now, yes, Dan?
Sorry.
We will do roll call, yes, not yet, Dan, Dan Steele needs to speak, go ahead.
Maybe what you want to do is vote on that and then do your separate amendment after that? Okay.
All right, so, uh, yes would be changing the firefighters to 96 hours, and no would say no, keep them at 72, and we're doing a roll call, please.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Alder Aratafrata?
Yes.
Alder Barr?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Rice?
Yes.
Alder Schrader?
Yes.
Alder Scott?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
Okay, obviously, we have that approved.
All right, good. All right, uh, so then right now, we're at everyone at 72 except for the firefighters who are 96. Tom, do you want to say something now? And I think.
What was the firefighters just approved, Dan?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, yeah.
Which is two weeks, so I don't, you know, I don't know if you want to do.
It's one, one day short of two weeks.
Yeah. And the police is at.
The only thing I want to add is, like Dan said, and we've been, I think we've all been saying, if this, then correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, you probably know, if the hours are not used, at the end of the year, they go away?
Correct.
That's correct.
They can't bank them, is what I'm trying to say. You can't bank them, they don't, they don't.
Don't get paid out or anything like that.
Yeah, it's separate from sick leave.
Separate, totally separate, and it's a separate deal. Absolutely, I'm going to move that we just do the same for the cops with the same wording that we just had for fire.
I don't understand that motion. So you want 96 hours for police?
All the same.
Okay. So there's a motion to also give the police department 96 hours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All right, so discussion on this piece at all? Dan, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, all right, so I see their, their point about the two weeks, and, and I understand the, the policy, and I appreciate Pat and Aaron's work on, on the policy, because it is something extra in response to the, the COVID crisis that we're facing, so I think we, you know, we want to try and be equal with, with different entities, and we're talking about public safety, of course, and, and so that's really what I'd like to try and see us do. Keep in mind, and I hope, you know, don't get sick, don't get, don't get COVID, please, and then it won't be a problem. No one, I don't, I, I assume people won't, but it's precautionary.
I don't think they have a choice if they get it or not.
They, they have a choice in protecting themselves.
Well, anyway. But, you know, I, I see their point about how the different work schedules can be conflicting for, with, when you use an hourly method, so, anyway.
All right, Dorothy?
I'm just going to reiterate, we're looking for two weeks worth of pay for people. If this passes, we're talk, what, what would be the number of days that 96 hours would give cops? Is that a Misty question?
About 13.
Two, almost three.
No. Ninety-six hours.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For police.
Yep.
Listen, I saw a police officer, standard pay period is 75 hours. Yeah, fine.
So it's about three weeks?
For two weeks.
Just short of three weeks total then, 96 hours?
It's about 13 and a half.
So you're, you're giving police more paid time off if we say yes to this amendment?
If they need it.
Rather than giving them the equal amount of time off that we're giving firefighters?
That's correct.
So you're giving them more time off, which is not equal?
Depends on what you're trying to make equal. All right, Julia?
Yeah, so I want to make a clarification that, you know, it doesn't mean because we are going to vote, I want to vote no for the 96-hour to the police, you know, I am following the numbers, okay? I am following, I am with Dorothy and with Sarah, you know, we are, I am following the numbers that they correspond to each group according to the amount of hour they work per week. So that's it, this is fair, it's fair, you know, we are not doing something wrong here. So, I want to clarify that.
All right, thank you. Pat, did you have something you want to say?
I'll wait till after this vote.
All right. Further comments at all? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call on this one as well. So a yes would be giving the police department staff 96 hours instead of 72.
Okay, Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Scott?
No.
Alder Schrader?
No.
Alder Rice?
Yes.
Alder Crowsey?
No.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Barr?
Aye.
Alder Aratafrata?
No.
Fails five to three.
All right, so now the kind of motion as it stands right now is 72 hours for all emergency personnel except for the fire department, who would be at 96 hours.
Correct.
All right.
All right.
Any last, Joe, do you want to say something now that we had that vote, Pat?
No, not that it, now that it didn't pass for police, I was concerned about the other emergency responders.
All right.
Okay, all right.
Hold on, hold on, I just want, any last comments, or can we vote on the, kind of the final motion, if you will? All right, oh, Julia, go ahead.
No, I want to say that this is, this is a great thing that we are doing for our emergency responder, and I am very proud for taking this initiative that the city, you know, the mayor and some of the young people, they put it together, so I think this is a, you know, a, a good policy. This is doing the right thing, this is doing the right thing.
All right, thank you, and so we see nothing else? We'll do a roll call, so a yes would be yes to 72 hours for all our emergency responders except for the fire department, who would be at 96 hours, and no is that you don't want to give them anything? I think I know what it's going to be, but we'll roll call anyway.
Okay, Alder Aratafrata?
Yes.
Alder Barr?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Rice?
Yes.
Alder Schrader?
Yes.
Alder Scott?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Yes.
I believe that's a yes.
All right, excellent, good, all right, so that passes, and, no, I think, like Julia said, I mean, this is, I think, important to do for, for our staff, and it's, on our present, the situation is hard to really know the right thing, so. All right, moving back to Public Works, we are on number four now. Dan, do you want to?
This is a motion to approve resolution R-63-20, supplement to agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of second edition to Stoner Prairie.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded. Did Public Works approve?
They did.
Did Finance approve? They did, all right, good. Mike, do you want to speak to it?
Sure, one point of clarke, clarification, Janelle pointed out that we had an error, there's, they actually changed the plat, it's 43 lots, so we will be changing that in the agreement, just wanted to make that point of clarification. Again, this is the same as the Crescent Crossing, it, it defines what public improvements are required, and what needs to be completed before building permits and occupancy can be issued, otherwise standard stuff.
All right, I do have one comment from Deborah Beaver from William Ryan Homes, and it says, "Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, I hope that you're all staying safe and healthy. I normally attend every council meeting where we are on the agenda to answer any questions that you might have, but in light of the pandemic, I'm sorry that I will not be there tonight. As always, William Ryan Homes has enjoyed a great working relationship with the city's staff and council, and that goes the same for the submission of this development agreement for Stoner Prairie Phase Three. It's a collaborative effort to ensure all items relating to the development have been covered. As for the status of the site, we continue to work with Mike and his team to finalize the last remaining detail regarding the storm sewer connections at Lacey and the Stoner Prairie entrance, which we hope to have resolved soon. Thank you for your time and hope to see you in person next time." All right, any questions at all on this one? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that is approved. All right, next up, Dan?
Okay, we will do a motion to approve resolution R-64-20, contract for Lake Barney stormwater study. Okay, we will do a motion to approve resolution R sixty-four dash twenty, contract for Lake Barney Stormwater Study.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Janelle, did Public Works approve?
They did.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, you want to speak to this one?
Yep, so this, we, we went out for a request for proposals, had six proposals. From those, we chose the top two firms and, and had in-person interviews. From that, we chose Emmons and Oliver, and just for clarification, that was, they used to be Mars, they kind of combined Emmons and Oliver and Mars, and Mars did, uh, Cori Vista and Terra Vesta, so, we've got good experience and a good record of working with them. Um, we were happy with that, there was a C, this is from a CIP, um, number forty-seven eighteen, so it's budgeted, and, uh, the budget was sixty thousand, that's what we're asking for this study.
All right, I know it's a very big deal for the people that live in that area.
It is.
Any questions at all before we vote? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved, next up, Dan?
Um, we're going to motion to approve resolution R sixty-five dash twenty, second supplement to agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of North Park for improvements to Onlet Eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right, uh, and did Public Works approve this one?
They did.
All right, uh, do you want to speak to this one, Mike?
Sure, this was, if you remember right, in North Park or Aurora, they vacated that, uh, park lot, and so we had to do a supplemental agreement, so that if there's any, um, park fees or anything that need to be collected because of change in occupancy or, or number of units, that we can collect those, and then, this is just kind of cleaning that up, it's housekeeping as part of that.
Yeah, we talked about this at least a couple times, this is the Addison where, uh, they're putting a second pool in, and so it's kind of cleaning up some of the paperwork around that.
Correct.
All right, any further questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved, next up, Dan?
Motion to approve resolution R sixty-eight dash twenty, resolution authorizing Commerce Park Drive bids.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded, and it goes Sarah. Uh, did Public Works approve?
They did.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
They did as well, all right, go ahead, Mike.
So this, if you remember, at the last meeting, you approved a cost sharing agreement with Promega. This, we have a, a development agreement as well with Promega that they're required to do these improvements, and as part of that cost sharing agreement, we get to approve, review, and approve any of the bids. So Commerce Park Drive, this project will be completely paid as part of that development agreement, um, with the TIF district, so it's all going to be, it's Promega's contract, and they'll, they will pay all of this project as part of that agreement. Um, we got four bids, uh, the low bid was Hammersley Stone at about nine hundred, just shy of nine hundred and eighty thousand, about eighty thousand under the estimate. Um, so we did get under the estimate, which was a good thing. Um, so we would recommend to approve Hammersley Stone, it's right in their backyard, and I think that's why we got good pricing.
They don't want other people's trucks in their backyard.
That's correct.
They don't have to haul so far.
Yeah, it's a pretty short trip. All right, any questions at all? I know this will connect to Lacy Road next year when we redo Lacy Road.
Correct.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that's approved, next up, Dan?
Uh, motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty zero oh nine, updating storm events listed in the erosion control and storm water management ordinance.
Second.
All right, seconded, uh, did Public Works approve?
They did.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
So this is, in twenty fifteen, NOAA, uh, National Oceanic, Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, did new rainfall amounts, you know, based on the increasing rainfall, and we've been using those numbers, as have all communities in the area, but we have not updated the ordinance, so this is just clean up the ordinance to match what we're enforcing.
All right, excellent. All right, not seen any questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved, one more, Dan?
A motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty zero eleven, update, updating requirements for internally drained water sets.
Second.
Seconded by Ann, and did Public Works approve?
They did.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
So this is, uh, we have an ordinance on the books right now that's contrary to state statute. As part of, I think, the developer bill, they limited the amount of infiltration we can require. They limited it to ninety percent of the difference between the pre-development annual runoff and the post-development annual runoff, and we required a hundred percent, um, so we have to, we're still asking for that higher amount, but to be congruent with state statute, we can only require what's required by state statute. So it's bringing our ordinance into compliance with state statutes.
That seems important.
Yep.
All right. Uh, seen no questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved as well, thank you, Mike. Anything else, Dan, for Public Works?
It's up.
All right, Dorothy, a question?
Yeah, I'd like to ask to reconsider from the, um, consent agenda, item five B seven, and ask that that be referred to Public Works as well.
Which one, which one?
Five B seven, that is the, um, erosion control storm water management permit request.
All right, uh, how do we do this? So, you, Pat?
Um, that was one of the, uh, decisions that was made, um, to, uh, to not have the Public Works meeting because of this situation, um, on Monday, so that's the reason we, uh, put it on the consent agenda directly this time, so that we could get it approved at the next meeting.
I think the que, uh, what she's asking is, right now, it's being referred to Plan Commission, and she'd like it to also be referred to Public Works.
Right, but what I'm saying is that Public Works likely isn't going to meet.
Oh, I see, so they're not going to have a meeting, uh, Mike, go ahead.
One, one thing is, we have provided review comments, and those will be provided to Plan Commission, what we're asking for some additional things than what they are required by our ordinance specifically, so we will have some comments, and we've, we've met with the city of Madison, or online met with the city of Madison and Dane County, and we've had, they've had some discussions with, uh, the Wisconsin DNR as well. So we have reviewed it, and we'll have some comments, and we're getting some additional, um, measures that I think everybody's comfortable with, but just wanted to let you know.
Well, I've had some opinions that don't necessarily agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to talk with you at some point about it.
Sure.
All right, all right, sounds good. All right, uh, moving on to Park Commission, Sarah?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R forty-three twenty, approval of playground and swing set structures for South Johnson Park.
Sarah, second?
Second.
All right, seconded by, I guess, Dan, I'll give you that one, it's your last meeting. Uh, did Park Commission approve?
We did.
Did Finance approve? Yes, they did as well, all right. Yeah, you want to speak to this, Sarah?
Sure, so we talked about this within our March Parks meeting, and, um, Scott had sent out a survey for residents within the area, and we received eighteen responders, and we selected the playground that had the most points within their, um, within the responses that we received. We also noted that it was nice that the swings were separate from the play area, so that, uh, it was a safety concern, just that hopefully kids wouldn't be running in front of the swings. It looks like a really nice play structure.
All right, any questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Is there anything else on Park Commission?
Um, I guess just otherwise for parks, the spring tree planting has begun, so it's been nice kind of seeing some new trees get planted. And, um, on Heelo, Healy was just, uh, announced as the Wisconsin Arborist Association president, so that was, uh, an exciting staff update, but nothing else.
All right, thank you. All right, going on to more reports, uh, library board, Ann?
Um, we have not been meeting in force, and the library is closed, but if we are, um, allowed to meet again, the library would be open, but all the, uh, events have been canceled for May.
All right, yeah, I know, a lot of events, even, you know, all our rec department at this point. We're not taking any reservations for any of our rec programs right now, and kind of reevaluating in about a month, I think, and seeing, hopefully we can start doing some stuff for the summer. Uh, Commission on Asian Well?
Thank you, um, we are also not meeting, but the, um, senior center staff is working, they're doing everything they can to see to the needs of the senior population in the city. Um, if people have concerns about anyone, um, feel free to call the senior center, and they will direct and make sure that needs continue to be met.
Yeah, I believe they are doing meals on wheels for about twice as many people as normal, so, I know they had to add at least one other route, so. All right, thank you, RCC, Sarah?
Sorry, no report, we've not been meeting.
All right, Transportation and Transit, Dan?
No report.
All right, uh, Seda, Julia?
Uh, no report, uh, we are meeting on April twenty-seventh, next week.
All right, Agonrola Affairs, Janelle?
No, meeting, no report.
All right, what about EMS?
Uh, EMS has not been meeting, but I think that you've been seeing the summary reports from Pat Anderson on, um, on their results and their activities.
All right, Bicycle Committee, Julia?
Hmm, no report.
All right, uh, Tree Advisory Committee?
And no report, but I will say I'm happy to hear that Anna was, had her, her, her name in the hat for something special. We, we had not heard that because we have not met.
All right, good. Uh, Landmarks Preservation, Shannon?
Oh, I, I got nothing.
All right, I know you haven't met either. Uh, Census Complete Count Committee, Dorothy?
That's a question mark, we, we haven't met, we won't be meeting, and what I've heard online is that there are some delays being caused by COVID problems. Um, so once we do kick things back into action, we need to come on stronger than ever, because the closing deadline will probably remain the same.
I think I saw online, we're at like sixty-two, sixty-three percent response rate, so, good, but we want to be higher than that.
Shooting for, well, as many less than one hundred percent as we have means the city will get less money, and the schools will get less money, and the county will get less money. So we need to get as close to a hundred percent as we possibly can.
All right, uh, Housing Advisory, anything? You guys haven't met either, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything new there either.
No, all right, thank you. Uh, Finance Committee, Tom?
Finance met tonight, and now we're going to pay a number of bills. First one is, um, check number one-two-zero-six-four-five through one-two-zero-seven-zero-one. These are dated March sixteenth of this year, um, through March thirty-first. Total is two million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-five cents.
All right.
The next one is ACH, these are dated March twentieth, uh, March of this year. Total is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and seven cents. Two more. Um, these are the P cards transit, transactions for the cycle ending February sixth of this year. Total is three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. The last one is P card transactions for cycle ending March sixth this year. Total is two hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, sixty-eight cents.
All right. I don't see any other questions, so, moving along, uh, Personnel, Julia, I don't think you've met.
No, we, we haven't met.
All right, and Public Safety, I don't think you've met either, Ann?
We have not met.
All right, uh, no unfinished business, new business, uh, we got some directory referrals, uh, maybe someone on Public Works want to do this, Dan, you want to?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve resolution R forty-seven dash twenty, a resolution authorizing the city to direct purchase traffic signal equipment from the city of Madison for Fish Hatchery Road construction.
Second.
Seconded by, I'll go to Ann. Uh, did Public Works approve?
They did.
Did Finance approve? They did as well, all right, you want to speak to that?
So this is, uh, this was originally included in the budget that you guys passed when we approved the Fish Hatchery Road bid, so it's not new dollars, but we have this to be direct purchase through the state contract, the city of Madison will be doing that. They do all the maintenance on our equipment, our traffic signals, that, uh, them purchasing that does two things. One is we can save some money because there won't be a markup on it, because we're purchasing it directly, and then two is we are ensured that there's consistency amongst our equipment that they're maintaining, so, that's, that's really the purpose for it. It's about six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of equipment.
It's a lot of equipment for Fish Hatch, but it's Fish Hatchery Road, a lot of cars. Any questions at all on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved, uh, you want to do the next one for me, Dan?
Um, yes, sir, um, we're going to do a, um, resolution to approve the construction contract with the DOT for McKee Road and amending the twenty-twenty-six utility and capital projects budget for the McKee Road project.
Second.
Seconded by Ann, Public Works approve? Dan?
They did.
All right, did Finance approve? They did as well, go ahead, Mike.
So this is, for the McKee Road project, um, this is a budget amendment, so I believe it takes a two-thirds vote, if I'm not correct.
Um, so what we're looking for about additional funding of about two million dollars.
Um, about one point four, a little more, is TIF funded, and about five hundred and eighty thousand is general obligation debt. Um, from that, just to kind of give you guys an idea where that money comes from, the bid was about four point six percent overbid. Um, that was about three hundred and ninety thousand of that. We have about ninety thousand of additional project work, and if you guys want more definition, I've got that kind of broken out. About six hundred thousand is our construction contingency fund, which is, amounts to seven percent of the construction, um, budget about. And then, the DOT requires for oversight about ten percent of what the construction contract award was, and that's about eight hundred and eighty-three thousand. And that's where we come up with the two, roughly two million dollars, it's just over. So if you have additional questions, I can break that out further if you need.
All right, any, uh, Julia?
Yes, Mike, I, I remember when we, uh, started talking about this project a couple of years ago. This one was a six million dollar project, and now it's like a eleven million project with a new two point four million dollar additional. So, my concern is, you know, uh, I know that construction costs went up and all of that, but I think we need to, um, I, I am con, I am concerned about that, you know, it's two point four million dollar more. Uh, and I know that the majority of the cost will be absorbed by the TIF number six. Uh, and, you know, and, and I saw that this TIF number six, that is the target TIF, was, we were planning to close it soon, but I, my understanding now is we need to keep it open for several reasons, for a couple more years, so, so I want to understand, you know, why was the main factor to, for the increase in this cost?
Um, some, some of it was based on, my understanding, it wasn't here when the original scope was, but I think the scope, you know, got increased as well as to what the project was, so there were, were some things added to the project. Some of it is, what I just talked about, is the, the bid did come in about four hundred thousand over budget. Um, and I think that number probably didn't include construction administration and contingency, that original budget number is my understanding, so I, I, you know, I think a lot of times we don't include that, and maybe we should, but I don't think that was included in the original budget, is that construction oversight. It's the same with Fish Hatchery Road, we don't have all the construction oversight, you know, included yet. We don't have kale under contract for the entire amount at this point in time, so, that's not unusual. Um, but with this one, we're kind of stuck because it's a DOT-run project, so they kind of dictate what that fee is.
Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, uh, Julia, I, uh, I remember the original scope there too, and, and it has changed and increased, as you noted. Originally, McKee, we didn't, we didn't have the, uh, Seminole intersection, wasn't part of the project.
Oh, okay.
So we're redoing that whole intersection, and originally, we didn't have the, um, bike pedestrian bridge either.
Yeah.
Um, so those were two major components that added about three and a half million dollars to the project.
Yep, and one thing I forgot to mention is, we are getting an increased, uh, MPO funding of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand, it looks like, so that, that will help us a little bit.
And the county, I know, chipped in a bunch of money for like the bike bridge and stuff like that.
Yeah, they did, yep.
I know, I know some people like to hear that. Other questions at all?
Okay, no, uh-
Go ahead, Julia. Yep, go ahead, Julia.
Can I speak?
Yep.
No, um, thank you, uh, but I, I forgot about the Seminole Highway Intersection, you know what I mean, I forgot that part, so.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any opposed name? Alright, that is also approved. So, that is the last kind of official thing, now we have Mayor and Alder reports. Um, so, a few things I wanna talk about. One is, uh, we are working with FACT TV to figure out if someone wants to call in to the meeting to provide feedback, you know, how can they do that? Uh, we were testing it out a little bit, and, um, you know, there's been a little bit of hiccups there here and there, but I think we've got that figured out. So, I think going forward, that will probably be an option, and I'd like to add that to the agenda, just so people know. A couple people asked, and, you know, it's just, we weren't quite confident in the technology, but I think we'll be able to do that going forward, and so we'll have that ability, um, going forwards that people don't have to be here, they don't have to email, and that's another option. But we will ask people to email in comments, just in, as, if they wanna call in, just in case the calling doesn't work, we wanna have that kind of as a backup. So, you know, just in case the technology doesn't work well, we wanna make sure we have that written comment as well. Uh, so, you know, we talked a lot about COVID, I just saw something today that in Dane County, there's, uh, three hundred and fifty cases. Uh, half of those roughly are in Madison, and it said that the other ones are dispersed throughout the county. I do know that there are confirmed cases in Fitchburg, no idea how many, I don't think it's a high amount, but I know that it is in Fitchburg, so continue to practice your social distancing and clean your hands and disinfecting and stuff like that. Uh, I really haven't driven around Fitchburg much, but I do know Fish Hatchery Road, McKee Road are both under construction, there's a lot happening out there. Uh, I don't know if we mentioned this last time, but they are focusing on Greenway Cross intersection of Fish Hatchery Road right now because there's not a lot of traffic, and they are hoping they can get that intersection done about a week uh, earlier than what was originally planned because of, uh, the ability to work a little bit better in that right now, and it's gonna be a lot safer, which is probably an even bigger thing without a lot of traffic out there right now. Uh, let's see here, other than that, I just wanna, again, you know, thank staff for all the work that they've been doing. Uh, the Clerk's Department with the election, I mean, that was kind of a hourly disaster, things were changing constantly. And so they did a great job, um, doing all of that. And really just all staff, you know, continues to do a phenomenal job, uh, all the departments. Um, you know, it's really been impressive to see the commitment people have to getting things done and continuing to keep projects moving, so I really appreciate that a lot. And then, you know, finally, uh, I just wanna thank the three members of the council that are going on to Greener Pastures after this, is their last meeting, so, you know, Janelle, Anne and Dan, you know, I came on council with Anne and Dan, along with Tom actually at that point in time, so I, you know, really enjoyed working with all of you, and, you know, obviously miss working with you, but I know you're still gonna be around, and so, you know, I'm still see you lots of different places, and, you know, please stay engaged, but you know, thank you again, all of you for that, and so, um, I will go on to all the reports, I'll save the three of you for last, let you guys have the last word, I guess, uh, but I'll start with Dorothy.
Okay. Um, no, no report other than, yeah, construction. Um, the other is, I, I want to give lots and lots of kudos to the Clerk's Office. I spent, I, I came here yesterday at ten o'clock for a meeting for the Board of Canvassers and ended up staying with them until about seven-thirty in the evening. Um, they had a lot of work to do, um, they counted, uh, three hundred and eighty-eight ballots that at least according to the envelope was fine. There was a hundred and sixty-six, I believe the count was, of envelopes that had a question either about the co- postmark or witness signature, or even if there were, there were some that were not even signed by the voters. Um, so there was a hundred and sixty-six, uh, they had to try to decide whether particularly ballots that were returned by the post office with no postmark at all, when it was supposed to have a postmark of Election Day or before, um, do we count those or not count those? Do, do people lose their vote only because the post office messed up, whatever? What they ended up deciding was to count ballots that came in on the eighth or the ninth without a postmark because you can presume at that point that, um, they had, um, put it in the mail on the seventh. So, it was kind of a best guess in order to not have to throw away people's votes. And I think there were like eighty-nine of those that were questioned, and a good majority of them ended up being counted. I'm not certain exactly what the number was, but call it about sixty votes that were able to be counted because our Board of Canvassers made a decision to, um, be reasonably flexible and allow those votes to be counted. So, I, I was happy to have the opportunity to observe that.
Thank you. Tom?
Um, I guess I'd just like to say, um, a little thank you not only to City Hall, but, um, to the Fire EMS and the officers responding to these calls every day. Um, you know, you gotta remember that they can catch anything and they still have to go home to their families. And, um, even for the families, it's not an easy task, it's, um, a lot of, a lot of animosity, a lot of nervousness. Um, so with that said, I just wanna thank them, they're out there every day, and it's not changing right now, so they still have to respond. And the same thing the mayor said, um, wanna thank the three Alders that are leaving, you know, um, Dan, Janelle and Anne. This job doesn't pay what it's worth. And, you know, you guys put in time, thought, and, um, thanks for being here, and, uh, thanks for the past years you were here.
Alright, uh, Julia? Oh, you're on mute, sorry, we can't hear you.
Yeah?
Yeah, you're good.
I go, okay. So, I want to echo what everyone say about, you know, uh, the office of the clerk and the work they did, and also, I want to mention that, uh, I continue doing the TV show in Spanish. We are, uh, working with FACT TV, doing those every Friday in the morning. Um, we are using Zoom, uh, um, so, um, we want to continue, um, informing the Latino community, especially in Fitch, in Fitchburg, and, you know, and then counting about what is happening. Um, uh, so, that one is good, we continue with the program, and also want to, um, thank, um, Anne for your work. It was a pleasure to, to, to be your colleague in the last two year, um, two, three years, yeah. Yeah, I don't remember. Um, so, um, don't be a stranger, um, you know, thank you very much because you are not, not only work as a, um, you were an Alder, but also you were involved in these communities for a long time, so I want to thank you for all your commitment to Fitchburg. Um, also, I want to thank Janelle, even though we don't work too much closely, I want to, um, you know, thank you for your service, um, you know, um, continue to be involved with the city, and, and especially I want to thank my colleague for this too, Dan, um, you know, so, um, I want to say, um, you know, uh, good luck, and thank you for your service, and, you know, and don't be a stranger, okay?
Alright, Shannon, any report?
Um, no report, but I would like to say, um, thank you to Dan and, uh, Janelle and Anne. It was a pleasure working with you guys, and good luck to you.
Alright, uh, Sarah?
Uh, yeah, just something, quick updates for Swan Creek Park. Uh, once the community gardens are open, they were able to add an additional five plots this year, so kind of an exciting addition. The roundabout construction is continuing between Lacy and East Cheryl, so just kind of another, uh, construction update that's occurring. And also just kind of, um, reiterating what everyone else is saying is that Dan and Janelle was great working with you guys, please stay in touch.
Alright, Anne?
Uh, well, first I would say I have learned an awful lot in the last three years. It's been quite, quite an education. Um, and it's been great to know everybody on the council, and the city staff is absolutely wonderful, I have met some really great people. Um, one of the reasons I didn't wanna run this time is because I had plans and things I wanted to do. Uh, spend more time with the grandkids, I have some extra volunteer things that I've started on, and I wanted to get my dogs through therapy class, so we could go out and visit nursing homes, and now most of those plans are kind of put on hold since I've had pneumonia too many times, and I'm pretty much not leaving my house anymore except to go on a little walk outside, so. Um, pretty quiet around my house, but, um, anyway, I will be in touch, you haven't seen the last of me yet, thank you.
Thank you. Janelle?
Um, I'd like to take a few minutes, as this is my final words sitting in this chair. As you know, we've had some family health challenges, which is why I didn't run for reelection for District Four. First, I wanna thank staff, it's been abundantly clear, particularly given the condition of the world, that we have asked them to take on considerable work, and they've made the difficult work look easy. Our first responders take considerable risks and responsibilities with every call that they go on to protect our ill, keep our city safe. The city's clerk has had significant responsibility processing countless changes, including high absentee ballots with extremely limited resources. Most of the people who would do this work are not full-time employees, and they were not able to assist, and so the burden fell on staff with many last-minute changes. We have seen the results of what happens when that doesn't go well. We've seen it in the news via the state, and I wanna thank them for their exhaustive efforts. Our FACT TV team continues to keep us transparent in these meetings. In other key meetings around the city, they're creative, they're hardworking, their deliverables are exceptional. Because of them, I'm able to sit here in my home, participate in this process safely from my house. Finance, in short, we're in good hands. Misty and her team are exactly the kind of people you want in this area. This is a complex space, and every time I've had questions, and I've had plenty, she's had solid answers. Every other area's been able to jump indirectly or indirectly, getting signage put up on short notice to close down public spaces, and countless other tasks change daily as we take a direction from the state, the county, and protect our citizens. In the interest of time, I can't speak to each of them, but suffice to say that they're hardworking, they believe in our community, they work as a team, and they're talented. I want my neighbors who stayed involved and were there to find solutions to make us better. I've been humbled and have really been delighted by their talent and their constructive approach, and will be part of the solution. We've seen parcels go up on the Veridian area, Seminole, the cattle over at Seminole, Lake Barney, and many other areas. To my neighbors, stay involved. You are the boots on the ground, and this is your city. Speaking of Lake Barney, um, I would like to thank our other partners who have been part of that community, county, state, there's a small army that's come together to find a solution, including the homeowners there. This is one of the more complex civil engineering projects I've seen. And we have every level of government involved in this, from the feds on down, including three communities and the neighborhoods. Um, Mike and the Public's Work Team have just done a really lovely job in bringing people together, keeping them updated, and working systemically to find a solution. To say that this is complex, it could have been political, would be an understatement, keep up the great work. I'd like to thank our committees and our volunteers, we're vol- we're very fortunate to have people that are very talented, um, bring considerable expertise, and really apply that so that we can have an extended community of talent that brings the city together. So, this entire team really focuses on making sure that we can have a city that we are proud of for, that we live here, that we play here, and that we work here. Um, finally, I would like to say thank you to the peers at my table here, um, and the executive leadership in the city. We've had some passionate conversations the past year. And we've had a full year. Um, as one of the fastest-growing cities in the state, we've gotten a tremendous amount done, including this, setting the direction for the city for years to come, and making expansion into new buildings, housing, and then also trying to make sure our roads and our infrastructures keep pace with that rapid growth. And yet, we've held ta- we've held the line on our taxes, no small task. I'd like to thank the people of District Four, who put their trust in me, thanks for the opportunity to serve, it's been an honor.
Thank you. Mr. Barr, I know you like to have the last word.
Always, uh, thank you so much. So, I wanna thank all my colleagues, particularly, I wanna thank Aaron and Pat for your leadership. I think we've corrected a lot of problems here at City Hall. I'd like to thank the residents of District Two for allowing me to serve, and I always did wanna have a, a competitive campaign with an opponent, and I finally got one. Didn't end up the way I planned, but that's okay, we, we had a fun time anyway. And so, it really has been a learning experience, I'd say, um, learned a lot about government, I've worked for the Counties Association, so thanks to them for, for them to allow me, allow me to do this the past few years, but, um, really did learn a lot about city government, certainly coming out of this more, I think, seasoned and mature and understanding of government, so that's great. And, um, to all my colleagues, Julia, Aaron, Tom, Janelle, Shannon, Sarah, Dorothy, you've all been wonderful. Also, Mary Gonzalez, who I got to work with, and, and all of our staff, you've been fantastic. We really do have a good staff, even when we disagree. And so, I will still be around raising some hell, as always, but, uh, um, we had a good time and a good experience, and so, no regrets. Uh, look forward to seeing you all again soon.
Alright, thank you. Our next, uh, kind of official common council meeting is in two weeks on the twenty-eighth, but next week on the twenty-first, we do have an organizational meeting. I believe that is gonna be at five-thirty, uh, we only have an hour before the Plan Commission meets at six-thirty. So, um, have that on your calendars, we're not doing committee hold this month, but we will have that next month, and we're already talking budget already, uh, both in May and June, so look forward to that. And with that, I'm gonna ask the, uh, ladies online, Janelle and Anne, to maybe make a motion in a second to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? Alright, thank you, we are adjourned at ten twenty-two.